Thank you. We call this meeting of the Select Board September 28, 2021 to order. Before we get to our first item of business, we were informed Wednesday evening that Ms. Balachandra was resigning the board effective immediately as of that date due to a fellowship that she took in Washington DC and got an opinion that it would be a conflict to serve on an executive board. So she has resigned from the board. We're going to be discussing later the election and how that will work for a special election. But before I call it order of business, I would like reorganization of the board because Ms. Balachandra was the clerk of the board and now we do not have a clerk. So I'd be looking for a motion for a clerk nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the appointment of Marcus Nelson to be clerk of the board, and I'd like to be heard on that motion if it's seconded.
Is there a second on that? We have a motion, a second? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Very good. The, 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 I'm, I'm glad to be able to make this, to offer the motion to fill the vacancy, and I'm sure Marcus will be, be good for the job. But as everyone, and what I would just to say, the job of clerk of the board is actually a pretty simple one in certain respects because most of the work is done by the recording secretary, and you can see Kristen over here managing our internet connection. So, but it is a custom of the board, and we've talked about this earlier on, that presumptively whoever is the clerk of the board is the next year's vice chair, and that the year after that, the vice chair is presumptively the chair, going to be the incoming chair of the board. So it makes these choices, they make a difference. It's been great working with, with Marcus during his time here. It particularly important is the responsibility the vice chair is recommending is to interviewing and making recommendations to the board for to fill any vacancies on boards and committees that are under the jurisdiction of, of the board. And with the focus particularly on trying to diversify participation and improve our, our operations in that area, I think that hopefully that's something particularly an area of interest for, for Marcus. So in any case, I wanted to not only make the motion, but to talk a little bit about it. I, I, I hope that this is a good step forward for the board, and if the motion is approved, I'll congratulate Marcus in advance.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And I don't see other any more nominations here. And then I do, now that we are discussing, I do want to also thank Ms. Balachandra for her service and wish her well in her new position. So we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Marcus?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Matthews, for the motion. And I think as we kind of learned this year, presumptively it would go from possibly from clerk to vice chair to chair, but that's not how it panned out this year. So just being sure that, I know that's, you know, kind of how it's been done, but just when we open it up for next election, after we have it, after we have the swearing in, we'll see how that process go. But I'm, you know, thankful for the opportunity and also want to very much thank Lakshmi Balachandra for her service for being on here with me for, with all of us and for, I think her presence was, it was felt in many ways from the community. Her opinions on things were, were, were pretty well received from the community as a whole and extremely respectful for her service and what she did to move us along to talk about topics that maybe previously haven't had as much depth on. And I'm very much looking forward to see how her fellowship goes and how she does with that. And just excited for her and excited for us and what our future holds as well on the board. So looking forward to that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
I would also like to say thank you to Lakshmi and wish her well in her fellowship as I sent a note of best wishes for her earlier when she resigned. I, I am deeply saddened, in fact, that our first woman of color on the board, as we say, woman number 10, will end up being an asterisk. And I really look forward to another woman of color on the board at some point in the future who is able to serve the town. And maybe that will be Lakshmi again sometime in the future. Who knows? But I wish her the best and I hope that she is able to serve at some other point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And to you, Marcus, who've all been clerk before and of course had the leadership position go through. So I think it's terrific that you're stepping up for that position and it's going to be great for the board. So with that, any further discussion? We call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Congratulations, Marcus.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing above ground fuel storage 305 Cedar Street. We have Chief Condon and Attorney Klasnick for their proponent. And they are arriving to us via Zoom. I just see the chief on there now. I'm assuming we're pulling in Attorney Klasnick. And before we, we get to that, everything is in order, Mrs. Patrick, on the application? Great. Thank you. Attorney Klasnick, good evening.
Yes, good evening. Daniel Klasnick. If it pleases the board, I'll just give you a brief overview.
Please do.
First of all, I, once again, my name is Dan Klasnick. I represent American Tower and its proposal to obtain an application or obtain a license rather for fuel storage to install a 300 KW generator with a 1592 gallon above storage tank. It's a belly style tank. And this would be at its existing location at 350 Cedar Street. Just by way of background, we've already appeared before the Board of Appeals and received a special permit for the replacement of the generator. And to provide the board with a little background in regards to why we're undertaking to make this replacement, there is currently a 100 KW pad mounted diesel generator located on the property. And that backup generator is, you know, currently connected and included as a important backup to the HVAC systems for the, for the, for the buildings that are located there. But due to increasing loads and heat loads in the building, additional equipment and modifications, it's necessary, it was necessary probably to, to go in and upgrade the HVAC systems. And unfortunately, because of those upgrades, the existing 100 KW generator is just not capable of providing the, the necessary backup power to operate the, the new HVAC system. So what we're proposing is a 300 KW. Just to clarify, the, the actual address is, is 350 Cedar Street. And as I said, this would include an above grounds storage tank, a belly mounted tank of 1,592 gallons. It's, you know, approved, has secondary containment. And then all this would be located on a concrete pad in proximity to that existing generator. And upon the installation of the 300 KW, we would remove the existing 100 KW generator. And I guess I would just ask this board to consider that this generator really will operate as an important part of the operations of the property that, you know, currently includes major radio, television towers, and broadcasting centers, which really are of course essential to the function of the station's operation. And I'm sure we can all appreciate the importance of keeping those stations on air in the event of a power disruption. So this generator upgrade is, is designed really and essential for that purpose. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Chief, do you have any comment on this application?
No, I, I think American Tower has been a, a good partner with the town of Needham for many years. They recently, I believe, did a similar setup with for a generator and diesel fuel storage up on Cabbott Street a couple of years ago, and we've had no issues up there. I fully support the, the change on the 350 Cedar Street site.
Great. Thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience live or on Zoom who wishes to speak on this application? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion?
We move approval of the application. That the select board vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign a license for ATC Watertown LLC to install a 300 KW backup power generator with associated 1592 gallon diesel gallon tank on the property at 350 Cedar Street in Needham.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Marcus?
Yes. Thank you both for being here. I just had a quick question about as far as environmental concerns, if any, with diesel. What is or what has been discussed with using that with the above ground, the tank? And can you speak to that?
Well, the, the unit itself is fully licensed by the Environmental Protection Agency for air quality standards. The diesel tank itself, as I had indicated, is double walled. It has self containment leak detection. And as part of the registration process, there will be a registration process with the, the mass DEP as well. So this unit operates in full compliance with all federal, state, and local requirements.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Cooley?
I guess I, I just might offer further comment. So Marcus, I think maybe expanding on your question, or maybe I'm misinterpreting, but this is a unit that's for backup purposes. So in particular, they've chosen diesel as a form of power rather than electricity. It presumes the electricity has failed, so they need an alternate power source. And often fossil fuels end up used, being used as those alternate power sources because they can be contained on site and they will be there. They physically have them so they can ensure the uptime. Okay?
Thank you. That was a good explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. We come to the vote. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you too. Thanks. Motion to move the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion? Alls in favor, say aye. Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is continuation of a public hearing for the dangerous dog hearing. As we all recall, last meeting, we continued the hearing with conditions that the, that there would be a rehoming attempt by Ms. Santa Maria of the dog and also put conditions on the dog that it could not leave the house unless to go to the bathroom, that it had to be muzzled and contained. We were informed with a letter by Ms. Santa Maria that the dog has left Needham and it is not to return to Needham. And that is her testimony. We still have a public hearing open. We did receive some comments to our email. And I ask at this time if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter. Yes, ma'am. You can, if you feel more comfortable, you can come to the table. That's fine. Yeah, right.
My name is Roberta Redpass. I live at 75 Old Farm Road. I would like to begin by thanking the town manager, the select board, and the Needham Police Department for helping us to secure our neighborhood and community from this dangerous dog. I am grateful that the dog is not currently living in the neighborhood, and I understand that no one expects the dog to return. The plan is, I understand, it does however, involve some amount of uncertainty in terms of what happens if you cannot be successfully retrained and as a result will not be accepted by the person Ms. Santa Maria has lined up to give the dog a new home. Given the resistance demonstrated by Ms. Santa Maria to taking any immediate action of her own accord to remove this dog from the neighborhood, I hope that you are under, able to understand the difficulty I, we have in accepting a plan that is anything less than definitive. I, I want to believe the dog is gone. I truly do. I pray the dog is gone. But if this is kind of how it is left, I would just like to ask for some clarification around what would happen if the dog should unexpectedly appear back in the neighborhood for any amount of time. Would the police or the town be prepared to issue an immediate order that the dog be humanely euthanized? If not, how would you advise us to proceed should the dog return? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and I'll just briefly address those comments. It's our understanding, well, I should say, after this close of the hearing, this board will make a determination whether or not this dog is considered a dangerous dog under the statute and bylaw. And once that determination is made, that would afford us remedies if this dog were to return. And we had a list of remedies which would include euthanization of that animal. But that would be after a call for an immediate hearing in order to determine what the next steps would be. So it is our understanding based on the testimony that this dog will not return. But if it does return, we are prepared as a board to call immediate hearing and go through that criteria to the fullest extent of the law of what we can do in order to make sure that this problem does not occur for the neighbors. The neighbors are the eyes and ears. If there's something that you see, you can alert the board and we'll call an immediate hearing. If the, Ms. Santa Maria brings a dog in for whatever reason, which is not allowed, notifies, we will call an immediate hearing, which we would demand that she notifies us that she does bring it into town. But that is not allowed. I don't want to go on too much. We cannot, we're not, I don't think, going to decide the fate tonight of what would happen if that does happen. But I will tell you, there would be a hearing for us to make that decision at this time, at that time. Further comment? Yes?
I'm, my, my name is Lynn Brayley, and I live at 68 Old Farm Road. And I have been, I lived across the street and a neighbor of Roberta's for many, many years. I'm struggling with trying to figuring out why your, this, this dog has not been determined to be dangerous. The police chief, in his initial statements last week, said he was dangerous. Why are you, why is this not being, it's so obvious? And we have a situation here where our, our dear friend and neighbor of many, many years is terrified in her own home. She's terrified in her yard. And, and the board is talking about, well, if it comes back, we'll have another meeting and another hearing. Roberta has to have closure. She has to know this dog is gone. And there's no question that this dog is, is more than a nuisance. He's a dangerous dog who has disturbed her peace for months. I ask you to be reasonable and to make a clear cut decision about this and not delay because it's wrong not to.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me clarify. In order for us to determine that it's a dangerous dog, we have to close the hearing and have a board discussion to make that determination. I will tell you from the evidence that we have heard, I am finding that dog extremely dangerous. And I agree that my colleagues would find the same. My comments were that the dog cannot return to Needham. But we are not going to make the determination what will happen if that dog returns tonight because in our mind, it's not going to happen. If it does happen, we will take a step of immediate hearing to then go through the punishment and inflict the punishment that is allowed for under the state statute. But tonight, our goal is to determine this dog either to be dangerous or not. And after we determine that, to understand that it's not to return to Needham. And if it does, which to me, it's not going to, but if the off chance for some reason, something wasn't above board and it does, then we would be prepared to take extreme action in that case. But tonight, our goal is to determine whether or not it is dangerous. And I think from the testimony, I can only speak for myself, that is clear of what has happened to the two victims in this case. Yes, ma'am?
There's only four, four of you. Why can't you just do it?
Because the hearing is still open, ma'am. Until there's no more testimony, we will then close the hearing. We're going to vote that this evening.
But not before we leave?
No, right, right after we close the hearing. I'm sorry. Yes.
My apologies.
Yes, nope, that is fine, ma'am. No, no, we're going to make a decision tonight. We just want to make sure we get through all the testimony that there is because we did continue the hearing and want to give people a chance to have their final say. Is there anybody else who wishes to make any testimony on this case? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. I find this hearing closed, and now it's time for board discussion on the dangerous dog hearing. Mr. Matthews?
Yes. The town manager has provided us a recommended motion based on the evidence and after, and I'm, and I'm going to offer that motion with some additional proposed language, which I'll read and if there's any question. And, and the motion is from the printed agenda, and then I'll add the language. I'll tell you when I'm coming to that and then return. That the board vote to close the hearing and declare that the dog Duke a dangerous dog. And further, that the board take no further action at this time based on information that the dog Duke has been removed from the community. And then after the semi-call and at that point in the, in the, in the, in the agenda motion, and that the owner is directed to notify the town manager immediately if the dog returns or is expected to return to Needham at any time or for any reason. And further that if the dog returns to Needham for any reason, the select board will hold an immediate hearing to take appropriate action. That's, that's the motion, and I have the extra text book I can give you for the minute.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. There is a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Any seconds?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Matthews, do you want to elaborate on your motion?
We have the recommended motion from the, from, that the town manager has provided, to which I've been inserted the language, that the owner be directed to notify the town manager if the dog returns or is expected to return to the town for any time or at any, for any reason. Want to be clear in doing this, that the purpose is not to, in any way, suggest that there's any reason for the dog to come back, but to put the affirmative obligation on the owner to notify us immediately if that's happened. I've been here long enough to have seen some of these, these cases before. And sometimes people, after a while, they get the idea that maybe it's not as serious a matter as it was back at the time of the hearing. This is a serious matter. This is intended to be a permanent order. And the, and if the motion is approved in the form that, that I've offered it, it will be binding. The dog is, is, has left town, we are informed, will not return under any circumstances. If for any reason that were to happen, there is an obligation of the owner to notify us. And that in any case, notified or not, if the board learns of that the dog has returned to any part of the town, then this will trigger an immediate hearing and dispose, and can result in immediate dispositive action based on the finding that the dog is dangerous. And, and it goes without saying that if the, if, if any of the neighbors or any member of the community sees the dog in the town, that will be, that, that person should simply notify the town manager's office. And hopefully, this will be a fair outcome for the best of, as we can do for all those concerned. But it's a serious matter, and it's, that's the way, why I've awkwarded the motion the way I have.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Ms. Cooley?
I am not certain that Mr. Matthews' language goes far enough to meet what I was concerned about. I would have proposed that we strike returns to Needham or, so that it says the owner is directed to notify the town manager immediately if the dog is expected to return. I would like to have a hearing before the dog returns because I'm pretty clear about what my decision would be after that. So I do not want to be notified after the dog has returned to Needham. I, I do not want to give that as an option. That's mine. Thank you.
Discussion? Mr. Nelson?
I agree with Mary Ann on that, being proactive. So we don't have a case where that's a possibility. And after talking to Christina and now realizing that Duke is no longer going to return and having her word, as I've known her word to be true, I don't think, actually, I know we won't have a problem with that. So to have, if it was to happen, I know she would give proper notice and let us know that for some reason Duke may, which I don't anticipate, but to have that in there makes total sense. I don't foresee this being a problem in the future. And we know how serious it is. We feel for everyone that was, you know, attacked, that went through the emotional trauma that should not have happened to begin with. So we are with you. We hear you. We are also understanding of Christina and her family and what they're going through for having to place Duke. So seeing from both sides, we will not at all anticipate Duke returning to the town of Needham.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Further discussion on Mary Ann's addition to the motion?
I'm happy with if you want to take, although all of us that write these things think we've done it the right way. If you want to take out the words, the words returns or, is that what you're saying, Mary Ann?
Correct.
That's all right with me.
Okay, so it'd be expected, and here, I don't want to legalize, you know, too much legalese, but expected to return. I guess if it was unanticipated and it returned, there would also be an issue. But I think that's, that's kind of already assumed in the motion. So the motion would be that the, the board vote to close the hearing to declare the dog Duke a dangerous dog, and that if the dog is expected to return to Needham, like the town manager would be notified?
By the owner.
By the owner, right? And taking, and further, or take no further action at this time based on the information that Doug I'm sorry. And further, if the dog returns to Needham for any reason, the select board will hold an immediate hearing to take appropriate action. Okay? Yes?
You know, we've, we've tinkered with this language a little bit and this, and, and it, and any implication that for any, that there is such a valid reason for the dog to return is not, for any reason, is unwarranted. The dog is not to return to the town, period. End of story, as far as I understand, both my own views and those that have been expressed here this evening.
That is 100% correct. There will be no tolerance for any returning of this dog to the town of Needham. And I want to thank the neighbors for coming out and for your testimony, preponderance of the evidence, overwhelming evidence that this is a dangerous dog, has been established. So on this motion, as written and as recorded, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, another public hearing, outdoor dining. Katie King? And Amy, yeah. How are you? How are you? Let me see. Everything good? Going well?
Very well.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. So we're here tonight on a public hearing for outdoor dining. It was explained to us last meeting, what that proposal was going to be. And then the question was that we left open testimony from restaurant owners. I think we received one today regarding the, the proposal. And then also to open it up to members of the public who didn't want to put anything in writing, but at least would have the opportunity to be here tonight if they wish, wish to comment. If you want, your floor is yours to just give a recap?
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to start and just say, since the last meeting, to confirm, the planning board did finalize the language for the warrant article, and there were no substantive changes to that. For non-business feedback, we had 15 resident emails, 14 were supportive. But I will turn it over to Amy and just have her talk through her discussions with the business community.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. So I have spent a lot of time over the last several months visiting in person with the local businesses to check in to see how they're doing with life during COVID. to check in to see how they're doing with life during COVID and also talk to them about outdoor dining. I found that my interactions with them one-on-one are incredibly productive and they're often very candid in their, in their discussions with me. And I have to say overwhelmingly, the support for outdoor dining is, is very strong. They recognize that outdoor dining adds vibrancy to Needham Center. It has added foot traffic. The non-restaurant businesses have certainly identified the fact that they see the spillover business from the added foot traffic. So there is definite support for it. There were a few concerns that I have shared with regard to providing a public asset in form of public parking to these restaurants and how that would impact the other businesses. Again, understanding that the benefits of outdoor dining outweigh the loss of public parking, but there was some question as to is the town going to provide them the use of this public asset for free? They're expanding their capacity to increase their business and sort of how is, how is that fair or what is the town's plan for that? So I took those comments to heart and those were used a large part in, in the discussions that we've had over many, many months. And I also have to say that I have talked to colleagues from several other communities in and around greater Boston. In fact, I belong to a meeting every other Wednesday that involves 37 other communities. And I have to say that Needham is far ahead of the game as far as other communities and planning for this. So hats off to Katie King and, and everybody involved in, in making this a priority and in wanting to get the framework set up to allow for outdoor dining, so if there's no gap in service for restaurants next spring.
Great, thank you.
And we did get one testimony emailed today that went to all of you, but it came in kind of late. So if folks didn't get a chance, so I'm happy to walk through it. Yeah, okay. And so there was questions raised around the calendar for outdoor dining. So I think this point just needs more clarification, which is that the default outdoor dining season is April 1 to October 31st, regardless of if you're on public or private property. And both the select board and the planning board both have discretion to go earlier or later than that. So there's not kind of a two calendar system going. There was a comment requesting kind of town support for helping outdoor dining spaces meet accessibility standards. I imagine that might be ramps or decking. And I think at this point, it's probably part of the discussion for ARPA funds. There is a question about the setback requirement and the actual number of inches that need to be made available. So the request is for 36 inches. We have both in the zoning and in this policy 48 inches. I have not had a chance to talk to the planning staff or the building commissioner about that discrepancy. So that's the one thing I would put a pin in, in terms of a substantive feedback that we have not had time to process yet.
Katie would also note we can't change it without a change to the zoning. So that it becomes a complicated change, actually, too.
Right. We would have to, yes, the zoning is harder to change than your policy. So right now, both zoning and the policy are aligned, but at 48 inches.
Okay.
And then the last part of the feedback is around the fees and the request is for a one-time fee for the use of public space at a flat rate of $100. We have annual fees, $250 per parking space and $100 for sidewalk usage. So I think it's just a fundamental perspective on the use of a public asset for sole use by one business for a set period of time.
And we could make ARPA funds available for restaurants or businesses that I know later on, we're going to put into different buckets, but I'm assuming if it does go in a business bucket and a business did have trouble paying that, maybe a smaller business, they might be able to use that to help with this.
Apply for a grant or some kind of process.
You're part of the grant?
Okay.
Is that correct? Yes, okay. Thank you. Mary Ann?
So, so I think that is correct, but I, I would have been concerned if the business wasn't able to afford that cost because that suggests to me that it wouldn't be able to sustain it going forward. So either that means our charge is too high or something about their business is not working right now. One of those kinds of challenges. I'm not sure if that's it. The only question that this email did make me think is we had set a fee based on parking spaces and sidewalk usage. So one of the things that struck me is we could consider if somebody was paying for the parking spaces, do we permit sidewalk usage in that space? And because I know we do have some people who are only using sidewalks. Right? So that would be their one use. So maybe we charge for either one or the other. I would be open to considering that. If that were an option, the rest of it, I agree, are all, I think, mechanisms that are sort of outside the purview of this. One of the questions that it does raise in my mind that is a next discussion for this board is at some point, we will have a conversation about whether the outdoor season for this year should be extended for the month of November, which is something we did last year. And I think that's a topic we should revisit probably very soon.
So I agree with that, especially with the space heaters that people have and efficiency of those, we can try to extend it later on if they're willing to do that and do whatever to dine. Um, Nelson?
As was stated in the email, he mentioned right now, right now, we have it from April to October. So for us to extend that change of earlier or later, still on the table, that has not been set in stone. This is just what we have for the moment. Like it's our policy, but we are able to change that. It's what's zoning. It makes it a little more complicated. So, okay. I just wanted to clarify that we have the opportunity to amend that if we see fit.
Could I just make one comment?
Yes, please.
So the discretion is actually, it lets the applicant ask for earlier or later and lets the board decide if you want to. So you don't, the board wouldn't necessarily have to decide in perpetuity. Okay, now the outdoor dining season is till the end of November, the end of December. It could be by applicant.
Oh, so it's not a one size fits all, like that's standard across the board. So when they require more special meeting or something for them to be able to do that, if hypothetically we had already had it in place, then they wouldn't have to ask. It would just be the option to start earlier. Do you know what I mean? Or do you want to speak onto it?
Yeah, Mary Ann?
So, so it is a discussion that we have with DPW because for example, for the parklets that are in the street, okay, they're, they're probably the bigger issue than the ones who are on sidewalks. The, the question is, you know, how does that interact with the snow season? All right. So the end of November is really sort of about the latest they'll go. And I don't necessarily presume that everybody they want the space outside. We may find differently. We don't, we don't know yet. So I, I do think it's appropriate to leave it to the applicant to decide if they would like to extend it. And it could be after a few years' experience, we may decide that that just becomes a season if, if we see that it's being used regularly until that period. Because you are right, there is some efficiency in DPW. You know, taking a day and everything gets moved out and everything gets picked up or something like that as opposed to doing it in a variety of shifts.
That's what I was kind of anticipating.
I think we don't have a, a good feel for that.
Okay.
The spring is harder because it will depend on the winter snow season. And whether the streets are clear or whether we think we're due for more.
Is that actually a question?
Yes.
I think this is a great program and terrific progress is made. And it's a little complicated. One thing though, I just want to kind of flag a little bit because I'm, I just don't want to get into a situation where people have expectations that don't work out at, at some point. One of the thing, I, 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 I think the idea of having annual permitting makes sense. It should be streamlined. It should be simple. It should be manageable for the businesses. But one thing I see in some of the discussion is to talk about the value of the parking spaces as being the lost revenue from parking. Parking revenue is minimal for the town. The main reason we charge people to park is just to encourage them to kind of, you know, not overuse the spaces and, and rotate those so that more people can get to use them and so on. And the streets have many other uses besides parking at, at given, at, at different times. So the real value of the parking spaces is the value of that space to the public, to the, to the people of the town, which consists of a lot of different things. One of the reasons for this program is that right now, particularly during the pandemic with so many people being uncomfortable about eating indoors and and the needs of the business community and the fact that people, this is an important sector and people value the businesses and, and they want the services. It makes sense to the public to basically, you know, license these spaces to the businesses at an extremely steep discount because it's in the public interest to do that. I'm going into this kind of dry analysis of this because that may change at some time in the future. Right now, we've got tons of empty storefronts because in the same way that the, that, that the restaurants have been affected a certain way, storefront businesses have really been affected nationwide in, 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 in the way that they do business by the shift online and some of the other delivery services and everything else that's out there. Those things may change at some time in the future. Right now, there's not as much demand for parking as far as I can see as there was two years ago. But there might be in the future and we might need to make other changes. Whatever changes we make, there's a thing of, of reliance where businesses, restaurants or whoever relies on things being a certain way. They're going to invest, they're going to staff, they're going to plan their, their meals and their service and a lot of other things around this. Whatever we change, we just always need to make sure to be fair to people and to, and, and, and to give plenty, plenty of advance notice. But I, I think that the town has to reserve the right to change in the future because things are going to change. Right now, this is an academic argument because this is the service that the public wants and it's a good use of, of the public property. But we just need to, that's, I, I think if you do it on the basis of annual licensing, it's fair to everybody.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And to that point, you know, under our section 2.1.0, paragraph 2.1.0. It does, we talk about the annual renewal and if there are issues with businesses, they can come in if the town manager feels that a hearing is necessary. But I think for the most part, for these businesses to have the consistency and invest is really the prime idea here. And of course, there is that fallback if there are issues when you know, retail does open and say this doesn't work anymore, then we can revisit it. So I think it's a great balance and I thank you for your work, Mary Ann, for your work on the committee. And I, I think it's a terrific thing for the businesses and the restaurants as we move forward. Uh, this is a public hearing. I don't see anyone in attendance here who wishes to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak on this? You have two terrific.
Hi, it's Aaron Pressman at 1012 South Street. Speaking just for myself tonight, I am encouraged by all the board discussion and all the work that the town has done on outdoor dining. And I just wanted to say as a resident and for all my fellow residents that we have really enjoyed outdoor dining. Strongly support the idea of keeping it and glad for all the work that was done on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Next, who's it? Greg Reeben?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman and the Select Board. Thank you very much. Greg Reeben, President of the Charles River Regional Chamber. I wanted to begin really just thanking the board and the town for the work that you've done in supportive restaurants over the past year and a half. It's really been extraordinary and truly made a difference. And I appreciate the work that's going into thinking about the zoning and, and the regulations that happened April 1st. Very important. Jay Spencer is the author of the letter that the Assistant Town Manager referred to. He's Chair of our Restaurant Committee as well as being the proprietor of the French Press, as you all know. And he essentially has articulated the position of the chamber and in consultation with other restaurant owners. So the content in that letter, I'll just associate myself with it. And then finally, just one other note in terms of the expiration of dining this fall. Do you know that we've seen already that the public is nervous about eating indoors again with the Delta variant and that extending outdoors is going to be essential to the survival and the, and the ability for our businesses to continue and would urge the board to keep outdoor dining functioning as long as possible. People do go outside. Some people, hardy people will go outside anytime of the year. We do have warm days in the winter. We would certainly like to see the outdoor dining season extended at least to December 31st and start again March 15th of this year. But for people who have their private outdoor dining spaces, we'd hope you'd allow them to do it all year round. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, sir. And Jay, looks like he is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Select Board. Amy and also Katie, we really want to first by thank you very much for your, for your leadership on outdoor dining. More specifically, being one of the very few towns that are taking this early step to be able to make sure that outdoor dining lives beyond the pandemic. It is, you know, it's something that, that we really appreciate. We appreciate you, first of all, addressing the five points. I do want to reiterate a few things though. The first one being a, a clear distinction between outdoor dining on public spaces versus private spaces. It's going to be extremely helpful. I know that many people are concerned about additional capacity. But what I could tell you is that even though you may be creating additional capacity, it doesn't necessarily mean that that capacity is being used. In my 10 years of being here, even in a non-pandemic time, it's, it's, it's very interesting to see even on those busy days how, how, you know, in some instances, you don't reach your full capacity. So, you know, I know there is a lot of concern about going beyond what we've been authorized for. But, you know, I think there are very few instances where the capacity limits far exceed what we can, what we can handle. The next point that I want to make is really about pricing. Under the current plans and particularly in terms of the parklets. If you have three or four parking spaces that you're taking up, you could essentially be charged, you know, $750 to $1,000 per year for outdoor dining. I would encourage the board to look at the success or lack thereof in non-pandemic times in terms of how many establishments took advantage of the, of the rules and the, and, and the availability of outdoor before the pandemic. By levying such a high fee, I think that this benefit could potentially harm a lot of restaurants and really force them not to open up in prior seasons. So that, you know, I would encourage you to collectively look at it. It is not, you know, I'm quite sure it's not meant to be a revenue generating opportunity, as been said. It's really meant to be a public service because so many citizens have, have responded very positively to it. We see people on our patio sitting in rain, snow, thunderstorms or whatever have you. And, you know, a lot of other restaurants see the same. So I would encourage you to think of this less of a revenue generating opportunity in terms of the fees. And really encourage you to look at a, a one-time space permit, which was previously permitted underneath the, the existing or, or current laws to which we're trying to change. Thank you.
Jay, if I could just ask, while I have you, do you have, so what I'm hearing is that fee might be cost prohibitive for some businesses versus others. So if you're looking at, you know, a shop that sells coffee, for example, versus one that sells, you know, goes into the night and sells alcohol and might have bigger profit margins. There might be a difference. Is that what I'm hearing? Maybe?
It, it could, you know, I would say that it's going to be, be truly dependent upon the hours at which someone is open and the time of the year. Even though outdoor dining is nice during the summer, sometimes it gets too, too hot where people don't want to sit outside. So, you know, those are the times that I'm really going to think about the $1,000 to which, you know, I'm, I'm expending in order to, to, to have this luxury and not bringing in the revenue attached to it. So it almost becomes a negative business case for, you know, for me to look at it in that particular instance.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm sorry, Jay, I didn't ask. We all know who you are, but if you could just identify.
My apologies. Jay Spencer, owner of French Press Bakery and Cafe and also Chair of the Charles River Dining Collaborative.
Great. Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no other comment, the public hearing portion is closed. I would, I think, you know, I'm fine passing this this evening, but I think it is something that we should potentially monitor as far as the fees are concerned. Again, the discussion about on your private business leased space versus public, what those hours might be as far as your rental. Mrs. Patrick?
I don't think the board has to vote tonight if you want to have a little bit more time because we're hoping to have a by-town meeting, but you do have another meeting between now and then. So you could defer.
What, I'd like input on that. Ms. Cooley, and then?
I think I would like to defer. I'd like the chance to, to talk about the input from Jay and you know, the other, the other piece that I've often carried in my head here is we, the town invested in all the And, you know, the other piece that I've often carried in my head here is we, the town invested in all the jersey barriers. You know, there is a question that gets raised here about accessible platforms in those. I don't understand really what the costs of those are and what replacement costs or replacement cycle might look like. But I mean, that's another aspect for us to sort of balance against these fees and kind of think about how all of that plays out. Could they essentially end up paying for the infrastructure? Does that make sense as a construct? And I just don't have enough information to know, but I think it would be worthwhile to rethink a little bit with this.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
I was headed along the same path as Mary Ann is doing a little bit more digging as to what we heard from Jay and kind of whether it's a cost comparison and making sure that we're making it as, you know, a public entity and making sure that we're taking that consideration, being mindful of the season as, you know, with the restaurant or with the business may be. And to try to make that as fair as possible across the board as we can. So I look forward to learning a little bit more and especially with pricing that Mary Ann laid out as well.
Great. Thank you. And I, you know, I thought we're under the gun here for the getting to a coming. So I'm happy to defer this. I agree. And I think that if we look at the fees, it is, there's a tremendous public benefit as well as a private benefit to these businesses. It's great to see people in these parking spaces. But we have to, of course, balance that with the fact that other businesses cannot use those spaces. So we can think a little bit more about the costs and potentially the seasonality on private areas and then reconvene and discuss and vote this at our next year, so next meeting. All right. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda, COVID-19 update, schools reopening. Tim McDonald, Director of Health and Human Services, Dan Goode, Cancer Superintendent of Schools. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see both of you. So last, we had an update maybe as well a month ago, Tim, that you came to this board and told us about, you know, getting back into things and town reopening, et cetera. And then, of course, since that time, the schools have reopened. We received quite a bit of materials on the town side and the school side of what is being done. With that intro, I would like to turn it over. Dan, I don't know if you'd like to go first or Tim?
I'll defer.
Great. Tim?
Sure. If it's okay with the board, we'll do a brief overview of the current situation in the town and then Dan will drill down on the schools and how they're working through the operational challenges to make sure that learning is safe. So I will briefly go through this PowerPoint. This is the data. The data from the state is updated every Thursday evening. So this is the latest data we have from the state. As you can see, when we look sort of in context, we are certainly above the peak, above the sort of period where we were June and July, where we had very low volume of cases. We are nowhere near the peak that we were either at the beginning of the pandemic in the spring of 2020, nor at the very high peak we were last year, right around the winter holidays and the turn of the year. So it's important to understand in context that while there has been an increase in cases since the middle of the summer, we're still very historically low over the course of the pandemic. This is our total cases. It's almost 2,000 cases to date that we've had in Needham. That's the green or teal. Those are the cumulative cases. When we look on the left axis, you see a purple dotted line. That's a seven-day average daily incident rate. And you can see sort of the peak again. We're not at a valley, but we're also not near a peak. Next slide, please. When we meet with the Joint Health and Safety Committee every other week, we try to consider Needham in context of our neighbors, both surrounding communities, neighboring communities, as well as counties. Because Needham does border both Middlesex and Suffolk County. If we had looked at this chart four weeks ago, every indicator would have been up in terms of average daily incident rate in all of those cities and towns and counties in terms of positive testing rate in all those places. It's telling a little bit of a different story right now. We're at sort of a mixed point. And if you look to the right-hand side, you can see two graphs, the incident rate Needham in blue and the positive testing rate in Needham in red. You can see that we are not moving up, not really moving down. We've been relatively flat since about August 12th. We're slightly down for positive testing rate. It's interesting, you know, Dan was talking to me briefly earlier and was mentioning that, you know, when he looks at statewide averages of cases, it's been 1,200, 1,400, 1,200, 1,500. It's been very consistent. I think, you know, it won't stay consistent for long. It will either continue to go up or continue to go down. And our hope is with vaccinations, which we'll get to in a slide or two, and with booster shots, that it will go down. Next slide, please. Here's, on the left, our case breakdown by age for the month of September. And on the right, it's the breakdown over the course of the pandemic, you know, April, March 2020 to date. You can see that right now, our largest categories of cases are coming in the 20 to 29-year-old range and the sort of upper adult 30 to 49 and 50 to 64. I think we like to see, especially given that we have school in session, that youth are not driving our cases, although they are a portion of our cases. And you can see the average age of cases month to month at the bottom. And you can see how in April and March of 2020, the pandemic was really hitting hard our long-term care facilities in Needham. This is a seven-day rolling average and we like to separate out the 12 and older cohort versus the under 11 cohort, which is of course the cohort that cannot yet be vaccinated. We like to see that it's a downward trend since the month of September, especially in that 0 to 11-year-old range. One other way to look at the data, I think this helps me a little bit more than the last chart. On the left, the percentage of cases that are in those children who are in the unvaccinated category. You can see we were in a pretty great place at the end of last school year. No cases in the month of June for children under 12. At the end of August, we went up to almost more, just over a quarter of our cases. We're back down for the month of September. I think it is a concern and we're going to continue to monitor this data point particularly until the vaccines are, the emergency use authorization for the vaccine is extended to children under 12. We have had breakthrough cases. And in a community like Needham, we would expect that more cases would be breakthrough. There aren't a ton of unvaccinated people in Needham. There are a lot of people that are vaccinated. And so there is COVID transmission in the community and we would expect that they would come from breakthrough. The breakthrough rate is still below 1%. The way the CDC calculates it is the number of breakthrough infections over, that's the numerator. The denominator is the total number of vaccinated persons. It comes to well below 1%. But we do like to just check when we see our cases, are they coming from those small number of people in Needham who are unvaccinated? Are they coming as breakthrough? Are they coming from kids who are ineligible for vaccination? It's helpful for us to sort of understand this as a whole. Oh, I will, I will have to correct this with Kristen. So it looks like our PowerPoint didn't take some of the values across. So we'll get you a PDF copy that includes the values. What it would show you is that fully vaccinated is at 81% of the population and at least one dose is at 85% of the population. Those are fantastic numbers in terms of community vaccination rate. We're very happy to see it. On the right-hand side, you can see the age breakdown and the green represents fully vaccinated individuals and the blue is partially vaccinated. There are some people, and it's a minority, but it is some people who have gotten one vaccine and have chosen not to get a second one. What we are finding, and this is something that Mary Fontaine, our Public Health Nurse, and Suzanne Ahan, our Director of School Health Services have seen, is that when youth are identified as close contacts in the schools and we look them up and they say they only have one car, one vaccination, we ask their parents about it and the parents say, no, I have the vaccine card right here. We had two vaccines. So there is some data that has not clearly gotten reported to the state. So each time there is a case in the Needham public schools, we're finding two or three or four youth who we thought were only partially vaccinated that are actually fully vaccinated. And that is something that I find reassuring. It's going to block me a little bit, but oh, thanks, Kristen. If you look at our vaccine uptake, I think this is a great slide. The town as a whole is at 81%. When we look at our 12 to 15-year-olds and our 16 to 19-year-olds, we're at 92 and 93%. That's fantastic. It's an incredibly high rate. And I think that helps give us confidence as we think about the risk level to the community as a whole. One of the things that folks may have heard me talk about is that we're in a little bit of a weird stage of the pandemic where the virus is transitioning to potentially becoming an endemic virus. So that means that cases may go up and cases may go down, but hospitalizations won't go up nearly as much. Serious hospitalizations, which include intubations and ICU stays, wouldn't go up. Deaths wouldn't go up. So we would really decouple those serious health outcomes, the hospitalizations, the intubations, the ICU, the deaths from the cases. And when we decouple those things, we start to look a lot like the disease curve of a flu season. There'll be some flu seasons, there'll be, you know, very busy, the emergency department at a hospital will be quite packed. But it is something that we as a society have learned to live with and we've learned to manage. And it seems like, at least some people believe that's where COVID is headed. So we're happy to see that the cases, as I said, are decoupled from hospitalizations. If you look at the June to September trends in the bottom right corner, cases went up, hospitalizations went up at a much more gradual rate. And this is an even better number, especially as we think about the context with schools, which have both vaccinated persons and unvaccinated persons. The hospitalization rate for youth is incredibly low in Massachusetts. That includes a lot of factors. It includes a lot of the safety measures that Dan is going to talk about in his presentation. It also includes the fact that the, you know, generally the parents of a youth, the older siblings of a youth, the neighbors, the grandparents in Needham, chances are they're vaccinated because Needham has a very high rate. And that creates a level of community safety that helps us because we are very concerned, especially the unvaccinated people, about bad health outcomes. And this is showing us that hospitalizations per 100,000 are incredibly low in both age groups. This last slide, I just want to understand and people to understand in context, in August, the CDC came out with a color-coded chart. This is different than the color-coded chart that the state used for the majority of the last academic year. And it tells a slightly different story. The CDC tracks this by county. It doesn't track this by community. But if you're in Norfolk County, it tells a different story between the total cases and the percent positive. If you look at our percent positive testing rate, we are in the low transmission category. If you look at our total cases, Norfolk County would be in the high transmission category. Needham would be a step below that. If we were just looking at our community, we'd be in the substantial transmission category. The CDC's, and this was the basis that the CDC used to recommend indoor masks. The CDC's measure is a static measure. It's not taking into account any of the data that's specific to a community. So it doesn't take into account that Needham has an incredibly high vaccination rate. And I think that's one of the reasons why in Needham, we have chosen not to make it a mandate that people have masks in an indoor setting. We've left it up to people to make their decision based on themselves, their own risk perception and the needs of their, you know, family and loved ones. That's the last slide I have there. I think I'll turn it over to Dan.
Thanks, Tim. Well, thank you, Chris, too, for all Chris's setting up those slides. You know, I want to, we can start with the next slide too, Chris, as well. This is a community-wide effort. You know, you're asking us, asking me in particular, to come and talk with you about what we're doing in schools regarding COVID and health and safety is an indication of the concern the community places on on the schools and the health and safety of our students. So I appreciate that partnership, particularly with the gentleman to my right, Tim McDonald, who has for over a year participated in our Joint Committee on Health and Safety, along with other public health partners, medical professionals and staff. And together, we try to make decisions that will guide me in my efforts to make sure that we have a commitment to health and safety, that we're responding to the academic and social, emotional need of our students and also that we're building on our efforts, which is very important to us, to ensure equity inclusion for all students. Just a couple logistical things to get the school year started, all of them regarding health and safety. Transportation is in good shape, which is always tricky in the beginning of the year. But for the first time since I've been superintendent, we don't have a waitlist. It's a good news, bad news story. The bad news is that we have fewer riders, so that costs us more. The good news is we have seats for everybody who wants them. And on our buses, we have a, we have health and safety protocols with masking, windows open and procedures to clean the buses at the end of the day for our passengers. Nutrition services, we continue through the United States Department of Agriculture to provide free meals for all students. And we are optimizing space in our cafeterias. We're not doing what we did last year. We are not measuring six feet, for example, or three feet. But we are optimizing space and spreading lunches around, for example, in a tent at Mitchell outside or using the Performance Center at Broadmellow for Broadmellow students. So it's imperfect and it's different from building to building based on their circumstances. But those are some of the measures and the logistics that we're involved in. So health and safety is our priority and I don't intend to go onto these links that are attached or embedded in this slide. Folks can do that on their own. What I do want you to know is that the Joint Committee on Health and Safety continues to meet and advise me on our measures and what we should be doing. We provide a dashboard on the district's website that indicates on a daily basis, any positive COVID cases that have occurred. And those are cases that occur for individuals, whether that case occurs in school or outside of school. I know Tim's slides are better than mine. That's fine. I understand the message of this. I know, I know. We have implemented a state program, a DSC state program that I'll spend just a bit of time explaining to you and folks have to sign up for it. We also are expecting families and staff to complete a daily attestation of their health and safety. So if I can, we'll go to the next slide. Let me talk to you a little bit about the COVID testing program the state has offered through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There are three components, a test and stay component, symptomatic testing for students who may come to school with symptoms and also COVID safety checks, which is also surveillance testing. We are only implementing the test and stay component at this time, which means that if a student is positive in school, we are trying to identify the students around that student who may be close contacts. And if they are asymptomatic, then we can test them in school with the binex now for up to seven days. And if they remain asymptomatic, they can remain in school learning, which is our goal this year to keep kids learning. Now, what that means is that if we identify a student in a class who's positive, we then go and identify who are the close contacts. And the close contacts are those who are in proximity, three feet and masked of those students. It's not everybody in the classroom. Although it's tricky because for our very young students, kindergartners, for example, first graders who are kind of all over each other, and our program is designed in that way for students to be in learning centers and small groups on the floor. Sometimes you identify more students than you do, for example, at the middle school or the high school. Those who are identified as close contacts then go to get tested. Our, the company that we're working with, CIC, is the company that the state is contracted with and working with their school nurses. They are providing binex now testing in school. Go ahead, Chris. And then those students can remain in school activities as long as they are asymptomatic. Last year, they would have been sent home. This year, they can remain in school as long as they're asymptomatic. Now, what's important for families to understand is that the participation in school is just for school-based activities. It is not for activities outside of school. And this is complex and sometimes a little troubling for families. But students can participate in school-sponsored activities. However, once they leave the schoolhouse, they are not, they should be quarantined. They should not be participating in religious instruction, playdates or gymnastics, for example, until that period of quarantine is over. Again, the priority here is to keep kids in school, which is the focus and should be the focal point for those children, not these other extracurricular out-of-school activities. As of yesterday, in grades preschool through six, we've had nine individuals who are quarantined. And we have 128 individuals who are participating in test and stay and they remain in school. Again, the focus is keeping them in school. In grade seven through 12, where of course more students are vaccinated, two individuals have been quarantined and nine individuals are participating in test and stay and they remain in school at this time. We did have a case today at Mitchell. I don't have that data, but this is as of yesterday. Now, if I may, just quickly about surveillance testing. We are not participating in surveillance testing at this time. You know, there are several reasons, but one of, one is, is Tim- Uh, you know, there are several reasons, but one of, one is, as Tim has already talked about, we have a low positivity rate, and this number is from about a week or so ago. Thinking about running down false positives, and there are false positives with uh the 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 testing. Uh, we also believe that we we would, while it's expensive to do the testing and logistics are are in many ways impractical, we we really think that we can focus and should focus our resources on on test and stay and our attestation, which we believe right now will keep students safe and in school. However, we're continuing to study this idea, and one area that we could consider is the possibility of surveillance testing preschool through sixth grade, but we're not there yet. So that's uh the big picture and what we're trying to do. I I think uh unlike last year, where where we were sending students home and we weren't out in school full time, we are uh keeping kids in school who are healthy. And uh we're really thrilled that we're able to provide that in partnership, certainly with the Needham Department of Public Health and Needham Services, and also the State Department of of uh Elementary and Secondary Education. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Great, and thank you for really all of your thoughtful work on this. You know, I have two children at the high school. When they go to school this year, it's almost like, you know, uh, it was nothing like last year. It's almost as close to a normal school day as you can have. They still do, uh, my son does football and, you know, they they still do the extracurricular activities. I go up there and people are, you know, hanging out and doing their sports. So you've really made it as close to a school year as you can, considering the circumstances. And and I really thank you for the work and Tim as well, as far as the town is concerned and uh just reasonable guidance. And I hopefully, I think when you're talking about decoupling, I think that's a great way to look at it because people with these breakthrough cases to that do test positive don't tend to go to the hospital or have those severe symptoms that we saw last year. I think it's important to kind of to keep that in perspective. But just with that, I will open this discussion up for questions or comments from the board. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you for uh for being here. Much appreciated. Question for you about the possibility of preschool through sixth grade surveillance testing. Um, as of right now, you said it's we're not there yet. So what would it take for us to get there? Or what is our, I guess, our hesitancy with doing that at this moment, other than I know the cases are pretty low, but if those people are unvaccinated? If you want to explain, just care to elaborate on that. Thanks, Tim.
You know, Tim initially for that. So I I think one of the things that we we are concerned about is sort of limited resources and and Dan, um, Dan was maybe nicer to the state agencies than I would have been. Um, we have had some frustration with the state um making commitments on when it could provide staff, when it could provide supplies and those expectations not being met. We think that we are using the best, the state resources that are available to us and the school resources that are available to us in the way that keeps the most kids in school. Right now, based on our vaccination rate and our positive testing rate, so it's a vaccination does help. We have such a high vaccination rate, it does help even those unvaccinated students because they may or may not have a sibling, they have a parent, uh, you know, who is vaccinated. We believe that we would find between three and four false positives for every true positive. Uh, that would match the experience, and I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but Newton ran something on the order of uh thirty or forty thousand tests between the end of March and the end of the school year last year in their surveillance program and found nine cases. When we do find a false positive, it takes time and effort. We can't sort of sit on that data, even though the the testing programs have gotten much better at doing. Uh, so it's it's a pool test, so you would give two samples for um and we would run a pool with you and, you know, nine other people, say. And if that pool came back positive, then the lab would immediately individually test all of the people in that pool to say it was, you know, Tim that had COVID, not Marcus. So it's it's gotten much quicker, but it would still be a period of time where we are starting to sort of take action and notify people that we would then have to sort of walk back. Um, we wouldn't be comfortable waiting because there are still some sometimes unexplained delays in the test results. We we feel right now, and it is a judgment call. You asked what would change? I I think there are two things that change that. One is the emergency youth authorization is extended uh for youth, you know, either five to eleven or two to eleven. And I think that really takes away a lot of the potential need for surveillance. What would make it something we really think we need to have is if our case rate went up. If our case rate or our positive testing rate approached some of the levels that the CDC graphic was talking about, if if our positive testing rate was at six or seven percent, then I would, I would want to really consider implementing surveillance testing. Where at, you know, Dan's slide, he said it was wasn't updated. It was one point four one. This week's at one point one three. It it's a very low percentage of positive tests.
The right direction. In addition, um, and I'll take this opportunity to any, any family members who are listening, please go ahead and fill out that consent form if you have not, because families all have to consent to participate in this program. Right now, we're between fifty and sixty percent of folks who have consented. So surveillance testing is only as successful as the number of people who participate. So all of these factors together say that where do we want to put our time and energy? And for now, based on our our um our planning and working together, the daily attestation, check yourself to make sure you're healthy, uh, feeling well to go to school. And then also um using this program that the state has provided, test and stay, remain in school if uh you are a close contact. That could change, but that's where we are right now.
I I think some people also worry that that we made a decision and we closed the book and and walked away from it. We look at the data every week. We are in touch far more often than I think Dan and I would like.
That's very true.
We are constantly looking at at the cases. It's not that it's written in ink. It is written in pencil and we are prepared to make a change if or when the data says we should. We don't have any sort of pride of ownership. If the data says we need to change, we will change.
Marcus? Yeah, just had a follow up. So you talked a little bit about the state programming. Um, as far as when we found out and um made the effort to join and sign on to do this and to what, I guess, what they said they would help out with or do, how did that affect where we are now, um, as far as what Desi is able to provide? Where we are and has that had any effect with our rollout or anything?
Uh, no, thank you. Uh, thank you for the question. So Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Public Health made an announcement on July thirtieth that this program will be implemented. It was the first time we had heard about it. Um, on August eleventh, they opened the application process for districts. On September eighth, the Needham Public Schools was notified because we applied for the program, uh, that we've been accepted into the program. And then on September tenth, we were provided with the name of our coordinator, who by the way is wonderful, Danielle De Leon, Danielle De Leon. Um, and then four days later, on September fourteenth, we launched the program. So um what I'm very impressed with and appreciative of is that the state from July thirtieth, when they announced this, up until September fourteenth, when we launched it, and we were, you know, that that happened pretty quickly, I think. Um, we have uh four staffers from CIC Health who are working with us. I will tell you that not every community is up and running. Uh, they follow the same timetable that we did. And uh I'm just, I'm really pleased that the state offered the program, that uh CIC Health is working with us and that uh we're doing everything we can to to make sure that we can keep school, keep kids in school who are healthy.
Yep.
Yeah. With the state, with the test and stay program, when you have an asymptomatic student in there, how do you get, what kind of notice do you give to the parents about the the out of school participation uh limits that you want them to observe?
Well, I know you can cover it, sure. So um, I think Dan, last year, in a lot of his messages to parents, talked about how, you know, we have to be working together, the schools and the parents, to make sure this is successful. This is an example where we're counting on parents and students to do their best to try to keep the whole community success, successful. It it does strain at belief that you can participate in Needham junior varsity soccer, but not, and I don't know the name of the the travel team soccer, but um that that strains some belief. I think test and stay, uh, so so right now, if there is a COVID case and you are identified as a close contact, our first question is, are you vaccinated? And if you're vaccinated, you're not going into quarantine. Last year, you'd have to go into quarantine. We'd recommend you test, but you'd have to stay fourteen days. If you're vaccinated, that that diverts you. As long as you're not showing symptoms, you can continue about your day, go to every place in the schools and the community. And that's the case for the majority of the high schools. If you're unvaccinated, the state has created a program that really prioritizes in school time. And it is a program that compromises a very little bit the strictest public health standard in an effort to have the best public policy outcome, which is kids in school. There were, very unfortunately, a lot of close contacts identified last year who did, we were happy they did not develop COVID, but there's a lot of kids who missed a lot of learning time. So this program enables us to maximize the time that kids can be in school. It does mean that after they finish their school day and their activities, we really want them to observe the quarantine. We don't want them to hang out in Starbucks. We don't want them to do these other activities. We're really counting on them to try to follow the rules.
And I just spoke, I, you know, I um people are what they are and in certain ways they do what they do. I guess, uh, I, the program, the way that you've got it structured makes a lot of sense to me. The fact that um you're trying to protect the ability of the school or the full school program to operate, which is the focus of of what the town does and tries to do for the kids. I'm I'm good with that. I also know that realistically, you may strain a lot of credibility, but there are a lot of kids that are way more over programmed than they ought to be, or a lot more activities than they ought to be involved in. That's my opinion. But I guess I just really want to know what efforts you make to really stress to the parents. If your child is in the test and stay program, it's important that they not engage, that they minimize all contact um except coming to school with with other persons outside of your household. And that um even recognizing the fact that I know that a lot of them won't comply with that, or some of them won't, I shouldn't say a lot, some of them won't comply. But I sure want to make sure that we're making every reasonable effort to get that message and stress it to them.
So when a case is identified, um, we get a a report into the system. So there's been a confirmed laboratory confirmed case of COVID. And when it's a school age person, we contact the school nurses. They work with uh often the principal or vice principal and the teachers. They pull class lists, they pull seating assignments. We do the contact tracing process to, as Dan said, figure out who was within six feet but had a mask, who was within three feet, did people take off their masks? And we go through that. There's a communication that goes out that to the parents that says, you know, you you have been identified and we do protect the the privacy of the person. So we don't say Tim McDonald had COVID. We say someone in the, you know, fourth period history class with Mrs. Jones. Um, and here are the steps you have to take. So we do explain that all to parents in an email. We found through the course of the pandemic that that people in Needham really have good intentions and they really do comply at a high rate. I would say if we do find people who are breaking that, we will assume that they uh didn't fully understand it, we'll explain it to them. And if they continue to not understand it, then test and stay is a privilege and they can be forced to quarantine if they're going to not follow the rules.
Thank you. And the second, can you, can you update us on where do you think we stand in terms of having uh vaccine availability for uh for the, for some of the younger kids?
Sure. So this is um speculative. I'll say two things. I believe and and Kate has heard me say this many times. Almost everything I've predicted will about the pandemic has been wrong, so you should, you know, take it to bank the other way. Um, I think the EUA will be extended, which just means the emergency youth authorization will be extended for Pfizer, not yet for Moderna, um, to youth in the five to eleven age bracket, or possibly even the two to eleven age bracket uh by the end of October, hopefully by October fifteenth. We do know that later this week, we're going to announce um a series of clinics starting next week for people who fall into the COVID booster shot category. Uh, right now, that is a limited category of uh those over sixty five people with uh significant immune uh conditions or who are immunocompromised, and also people who um fit the definition of a frontline worker, which in many instances is a healthcare first responder or teacher.
And we do, Mr. Chair, we expect to uh offer clinics for children uh once the vaccine is approved.
Absolutely.
Great. And that was a big help at the Pollard Middle School when you had that clinic.
It was. Mr. Chair, if I could mention, one of the things um I did want to let the select board know. Um, the town, I I think, as you know, takes emergency management very seriously. It's something we've worked to build up over the years. We do uh engage in an after action report and improvement plan process. We identify lessons learned. Uh, we did it for one of the first phases of the pandemic, where right now we're doing it for the second phase of the pandemic, the the July one to June thirty twenty twenty one. Um, so that's something that I I think the town has made an investment in emergency management, and I I want you to know that we we take that seriously and we're using that sort of lens to try to make sure we improve our performance going forward every step of the way.
We're back to area.
Thank you. I really don't have very many questions left. There was one that was just, I think, a language question. Dan, you talked about nine children who had been quarantined in an older age group and I think two in a younger age group, or I'm sorry, it was the reverse, nine younger and two older. I would typically, I think you're telling me those children are ill COVID positive, so I would say isolated typically, yes? Okay. I just want to make sure I understood the categories. I was actually quite pleased when I saw the state come out with the test and stay program. I do think it is a wonderful initiative for this year, particularly based on the experience we saw last year. Um, and given that we've learned more about masking and how people interact and and all of that to keep those children in school. But I I do understand the concern that quarantine actually still means something in an unvaccinated person. So um appreciate all your efforts to make all that work and to keep children in school to the extent possible.
And by the way, there are some of this, thank you for that clarification, isolation, quarantine. There are some that are, have chosen not to participate in test and stay, and so their children are quarantined. Um, asymptomatic, but they're quarantined, uh, just for whatever reason, they're not participating.
Thank you. Um, thank you again for this update. I just did have a question before you go as far as I'm optimistic, but you look at the trends, and I know you said right now, you don't know if it's kind of rising or falling kind of in that window where we are. What what do you like to see? A couple, well, you know, in a couple of weeks, kind of the general direction, is it a month? Is there, is there a way to predict kind of where we are on a up or down or is it, we can't really.
Can I just say Thanksgiving and then Tim can talk?
I I think, you know, one of the things you see when you look at different parts of the country, uh, areas of the south, uh, parts of Florida that people go indoors in the summer because it's too oppressively hot, they have cases spike. In the northern part of the country, we have people who start going inside in November and December, and that's where, if you think of our typical flu season, our typical flu season doesn't start September, even though there is a very small volume of cases then. It really starts taking off in December. Um, I I think it's a, an open question. Um, the Delta variant has certainly caused people to reassess some of their conclusions. If everyone in the population five to one hundred and five has had the chance to get vaccinated, that will make a very big difference. It will really change, I think, a lot. It will allow us to to potentially relax further some of the safety standards that are in place, which I think, you know, we always want to be careful and we want to do that judiciously, but um that would be a game changer.
Okay, thank you again.
All right. So this is probably more so for Dan. Um, for my other world and sports, I've had a lot of long meetings determining gym space and things like that. So my question is, um, where are we as far as determining if that's going to be allowed for outside programs other than Needham? Um, sports to um have the gym summit, and if it's not anytime soon, will, I guess, an update be made to that?
I think there's a gym summit coming up too, on like October
Okay.
sixth or seventh. So um, I'm uh I'm aware that the summit is coming up and we have to make a decision. I'm um, and I'm, and I'm hopeful that we can uh be able to you know, provide some good guidance for that summit.
Okay.
Um, and we're looking at that November first timeline.
Okay.
Without a decision tonight.
Got it. So November first would possibly be the deadline when people are allowed to start using their permitted space.
In in uh in some fashion, and I will, you know, one of the things that will be important, and that's why I'm only hesitating a bit. If we continue to mask beyond the date in which programs can come into the schools, the expectation will be that all of those participants are masked. And that I will need to know that there is a a program to track that. And that I will need to know that there is a, a program to track that, to hold folks accountable. Because like, we can't have students in during the school day masking only to come in the evening and, and not mask. So confusion and it doesn't make sense. So that's one of the things that. I'll, I'll lean on my colleague to, to guide me, and, but I think we'll get, we'll get to my place.
All right. So possibly would that have to be in place before there's some, like that plan? Okay. So we have some work to do. Understandable. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure the gym, I think gym summit may have been put up, there's uncertainty, so we'll, we'll follow back up, but it's good to know that. There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
There's a light. Oh, the light's not a trend, so.
Great. There's a light. Mary Ann?
I did just want to ask, Tim, do you have any observations, lessons learned from the contact tracing efforts over the most recent past? About what you're seeing for cases in terms of any general conclusions?
So one of the things, I, I think it, it is a good thing, but it does make the school nurse and the public health nurse's job a little bit harder. Dan referenced it. Last year, and I, I'm gonna largely get out of my depth very quickly. The schools were maybe operating not in the normal way a classroom would operate. People were always in their seats. There wasn't sort of small group work. There wasn't for the younger kids. Shared reading groups or reading circles or things like that. And, and I believe this year, the schools are, are trying to have that normal classroom environment. I think what that means is it's not as simple as saying, please show me your seating chart and we'll draw a line. And we'll know that it's this person, this person, and this person, this person who has to quarantine. It, it's more of a discussion with the, the teacher in the classroom. It's more of a discussion potentially with the principal to understand what the potential exposure is. That's a good thing, that kids are getting sort of the, the learning environment that is most conducive. It does make it a little bit more challenging to do that contact tracing.
I was actually asking a different question.
Okay, so.
Sorry. Good to know that one. I was thinking about identifying where the cases come from, where the transmission is actually happening. I'm presuming that the cases in the school are actually coming from outside the school. That you're not seeing transmission in classrooms based on.
We saw very, very limited transmission last academic year. Right now, we haven't seen evidence of transmission. Sometimes we don't always know where cases come from. It's not always clear. Right now, there's still, the majority of transmission occurs in household settings or is travel related. Over the summer, we were seeing a, a departure from some of the cases last year where a parent might travel. And they would come home and then three days later, their spouse would test positive and then their son or daughter would test positive. What we were seeing over the summer was the entire family went to Fort Lauderdale and they all came back positive. Or they all met their cousins from Michigan down the Cape, and then they all came back positive.
So it remains still low transmission.
Very low, yes.
Okay. With that, we will say good night. Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, town manager, Ms. Spacker. With a laundry list.
Big night for items here. The first item is the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Funding. And just to really talk to the board about the kinds of things that we're thinking of. We have tentatively identified some target amounts for those buckets. We still are working through the infrastructure that we can legally fund through ARPA, and so that eight million number. May go down slightly depending on what that is, and it would be more available for some of the others. So for, with respect to economic development, Amy and Katie have put together some wonderful program ideas that would allow. For grant programs for local businesses with certain eligibility criteria and with. A sliding scale maybe based on the size of the business itself. And these would be to fund things like. And we, we were talking about accessibility issues, digital adaptation, operating costs, even staffing retention and job incentives. These could be at the discretion of the individual businesses or landlords. They would be required under the federal guidelines to. Prove that they use the money for this purpose, because there's very strict reporting in all of these cases. They, Amy has also recommended that we have potential of continuing project pop-up. We've had some questions as to whether businesses that went out of business or new businesses could apply for grants, and we're, we're. Working with council to see if that's the case. The project pop-up that we have had, the two of them we've had have been very popular. And we're looking at whether there's been disparate impact of pandemic on arts and culture in town. And whether we can use some of the funding to support those efforts to bring those organizations back. So we are looking at a funding. Recommendation of about five hundred thousand dollars for economic development, and that number, like I said, could increase. We could. Depending on the, the interest in the programs. So if the board is generally in support of these buckets, we can bring to you a specific proposal with some proposed regulations. You've already approved the two hundred and ten thousand dollars for public health epidemiology and contact tracing. And when Tim was here talking about that, he did talk to you about mental and behavioral health services that. We're really trying to increase. We know that, just like practically every other conversation we have in the employment sector, there's no staff. It's very hard to get a mental health services and the need for mental health and behavioral health services is way high. So these would be for clinicians and contracts and education and outreach. In youth and family services as well as older adults. We had a category of general COVID-related expenses that might not have another home, and so we just wanted to keep that opportunity. We know that we have technology improvements in our buildings, including the ability to run hybrid meetings for more boards. Those who aren't covered on cable. And again, right now, the interpretation is. Investments in infrastructure are limited to water and sewer, and so we're trying to figure out how to move some of our projects. And priorities around so that we could make sure we spend the money, the, the period of spending of incurring the costs is through twenty twenty-four, so. Items that are further out in our capital plan, it's just a matter of trying to figure out. The, the, the number of projects that the Department of Public Works is managing and the number of projects the public would like us to move up. Are now in conflict with moving up projects that people maybe aren't their high priority, but we have federal funding for. So there'll be a lot more conversation about trying to move those ahead. So if these general categories make sense, we can start putting together a plan, or if there's something missing, we'd be very much interested in hearing your feedback.
Thank, and infrastructure, water and sewer, drains not included in that, is that correct?
We're, we're putting together the plan as if stormwater is, drains are allowed, but they're still unsettled.
Okay.
Information.
For the local infrastructure, as far as the, the approximate eight million dollars, you said it has room and opportunity to go. Possibly could go down, or, and then if that's the case, does that mean some of this money can be allocated towards these other buckets? Okay, so I just, with that in mind, I think about the crisis for staffing with behavior, mental health and whatnot. In, increasing that bucket possibly to attract more people, whether it's with hiring, you know, at a higher rate or something like that. In order to attract people to want to do this job, as far as that's concerned. And then also when I think about the academic development, putting more money towards local businesses, public music and things like that. So that option's there. I know they're not set in stone, but I just wasn't sure if that eight million could be divvied up into other buckets a, as we see fit, if needed.
Certainly, and we are putting together that infrastructure plan, and so we'll have more specifics for you. But there certainly could be more of those, and I would like probably to bring in our Health Human Service staff to talk about the mental behavioral health. Whether they think that would help them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
I'm definitely interested in understanding sort of how, how those overall buckets shape out. But I'm also curious, Kate, with the infrastructure question, if, if that money were spent on the infrastructure, I hear what you're saying about. You know, there's only so much you can pull in with the capacity you have. Could the money also be spent on hit count that can support the management of those projects? If that was needed to accomplish getting more of the projects that we know are on our list. It's just a question of, we had them spaced out for when we could reasonably get to them. It could be done. It's worthwhile doing them with these dollars that are available.
Yes, a, as long as you hire for a temporary basis, we are, you know, there, it's. It's certainly possible. It's more likely that construction inspection services, folks who are doing survey party work. The engineering firms that we work with have lost all their civil engineers. Nobody's becoming a civil engineer. Whether we could hire a civil engineer on a temporary basis, you know, these are the struggles that every, everyone. At this table knows that we're, that, you know, that we're seeing all over. So those are definitely things that we've been looking at.
Yeah, okay. I guess, Kate, just on that eight million dollars getting back, because that's the big number here. My concern is, and I think it's a well-spent on water and sewer, is the timeframe, like we're talking, we're up against a tight timeframe. So I would like to see how that shakes out, and if there's almost, there's a plan B in case we can't get that done. You know, obviously, we're not gonna leave it on the table, so what else could it go to as kind of a, an emergency measure? Because as much as we'd love to spend, I just hope it's feasible that we can, under the, the time that's allocated. But I, with Mary Ann, you know, if we can get some help, and we all know help, as you said, is, is hard to find. It would be beneficial. But these look like reasonable buckets and looking forward to further discussion on them. So, thank you.
So at your last meeting, you reviewed the Climate Action Plan Committee Charge, Composition and Charge. And we're recommending that the board, having heard, I've heard no other feedback, approve that charge and we can get it advertised. I wanted to note that the, the new form that we're using contemplates. Actually adopting special municipal employee status when we create new committees. We, because you have several new committees in the works, we would bring back another recommendation for you to add to your list. And we would update the date if the board adopts this, and if you adopted the special municipal employee status for it, we would update that when we get to it. But we would expect to do that in October.
That makes sense. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the committee charge and composition of the Climate Action Plan Committee.
Motion, so any discussion? Oh, yes, Mary Ann?
Can I, just a tangential comment, and Miles may kill me, but I would say, can we add these to our appointments flyer? For the Harvest Fair this weekend and put them on the page so that citizens in town know these are our opportunities. Thank you, Miles.
Did you expect him to say no?
Great ask, Mary Ann. And I would also note on these two committees, I think originally we had Ms. Belachandra on. On one of these committees, I think it was the environment, the climate. So we will also be looking for this board or how this board progresses with another candidate for that. Any further discussion? There are none, we come to the vote. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Transportation, planning and review.
Mr. Chair, this is probably a two-part process. The board adopted a goal to evaluate the role of the various committees that are working on transportation. In Needham, and that would be in particular, the Traffic Management Advisory Committee, Transportation Committee, the Rail Trail Advisory Committee, and the Complete Streets Committee. Which we actually never formed. So the, the, this would be a very short-term plan of a committee to look at those. And recommend to the board that there should be streamlining or any changes to how the community looks at and evaluates. And makes recommendations for priorities for transportation. And then if there is a recommendation and that's enacted, I would expect this committee to make recommendations for. What a new committee, if it is recommended, would look like and what it would be charged with. So the first step is to see where are we placed with respect to how we're going to be looking at transportation priorities. And then the second half of the board's goals section would be, what are the long-term, short-term and long-term transportation priorities for the community?
Is there a motion for this committee?
This is a discussion only?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
So any feedback on the charge of the committee and the composition? Otherwise, we'd bring it back to the board on the, in October.
Marcus?
Yeah, so my question is, if this committee's formed and we find, or deem necessary to reevaluate the role and composition. We are going to then in turn possibly open up some of these. Positions with recommendations or seeking the input from the more, more of the community for these. So other than our community members and constituents that are serving on these, we would have some kind of open dialogue. Or be getting the word out to the rest of the community that we will have the option for them to, you know, apply. Or meet with Mary Ann to be appointed to the new composition of these.
Mary Ann?
So I, I guess I would say that I think the committee would be looking at whether there should be a new committee. I don't know, a committee on a committee is.
Right, but if it's deemed necessary that there is a new committee that we would need, then how would that, how would we attack that? I guess is the, the second part of, the two parts of this.
And I think it would be, it would be very helpful for people who are interested in transportation in general to, you know, attend this. I'm sure it'll be a fairly informal committee, and that they would be happy to receive input. And I would expect that, well, I'm sure that the board would hold public hearings on any recommendation that it would need to make then to town meeting. And then if there's a new committee, whether it be the Select Board Committee or the Town Meeting Committee. There would be robust committee charge and composition rewritten and advertised.
Correct. Any other discussion? Okay, so we will look to vote that, look for input. If there's anything on the board, or Mary Ann?
I just have one question as I was relooking at this. So the only. Sort of citizen-at-large kind of role is the appointment by the planning board in this mix, right? Otherwise, everybody's coming from a, already appointed to a committee?
Or the moderator's designated, if he chooses not to serve.
Well, maybe that is something to consider as we.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about whether we want an appointee here or not.
Totally open. I think the thinking was the people who have been in the trenches, working on the committees, might have a sense of what. The, what made sense for a future committee.
I'm, I'm thinking about somebody who's done a lot of work with us on Complete Streets, for example, which never got formed as a committee. So that individual in particular, I was hoping would be a part of this conversation. So we could add a citizen-at-large.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to have citizens-at-large. And that's to Marcus' comment as well. I think that would be helpful. Great. So comments like that, we can discuss and we can vote this item at our next scheduled meeting. That is input from the board. Okay, Sierra Naturals agreement. I see my signature, which means that I was chair of that, so this is five years old. Makes you wonder, doesn't it?
It is. So Sierra Naturals is the name of the registered marijuana dispensary. In town. It was originally signed with Sage Cannabis, but it just had a name change. So we, and then they had some changes with respect to the staff who are to be notified on, in the agreement. So we started there and we were, going to be simply providing the board with a proposal to have an amendment. To include those two changes, the name and the individuals. But we did have Dave Davison, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Finance, and I met with representatives of Sierra Naturals on several occasions. And recommend a few other changes that have to do with the auditing methodology and the timeline by which they need to provide. The statements to, and, and the capital that they provide us. So Dave was satisfied with the audit methodology, and there would be a period which, because it's coming a little later. If they provide us with the funds and it's not, it doesn't, isn't enough, then they would have to reconcile that at the end of the fiscal year. And provide additional. We, we did receive. More than two hundred thousand dollars on this contract from Sierra last year. So the, the one other thing that's of note in this proposal is that. Sierra Naturals has been talking to the Board of Health about the appointment-only model and whether that needs to continue. The appointment-only model is referenced in this, in your host community agreement, but also in the special permit from the planning board. So if the Board of Health recommends and the planning board agrees, and there's eventually a change in the appointment-only model, we'll be back. But we felt that that was a much longer process, and we wanted to make sure that mail that needs to go back and forth needs to go to the right parties. And that the reconciliation and the audit were really on the same page with Sierra Naturals.
Great. And I would like, if it does go, that part of that appointment-only model was the bird on the police department. I remember that we saw in other communities with people coming in and out of the facility. So I would like to hear, when the time comes, from the chief and everyone. That be responsible to make sure that it would work. But this makes sense. Is there a motion on this amendment?
Yes, a motion that the board vote to approve and sign the amendment to the Community Benefit Agreement between the Town of Needham, Sierra Naturals, Incorporated.
Through business as A Y R, formerly known as Sage Cannabis.
Oh, yes.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Marcus.
I don't think it'll be an issue, but as far as reconciling, if they were to hypothetically miss the date by the end of the fiscal year, what would happen if that were to happen?
It's a general fund receipt for us. It's not allocated for any specific purpose, so it would go into the next year.
Okay.
The amount I had, Mr. Chair, just, it's 263,487 that was received for the, the last period.
That's great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, come to the vote. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Public participation.
Plugging away the board goals, Mr. Chair.
Great.
The board voted to adopt a goal to create a public comment period at a select board meeting and receive feedback from other committees, including the school committee. And based on information from Town Council, we have provided to you a policy for you to review. And it would be adopted at a future meeting based on any feedback that you might have. The change in practice for the board would be that the public comment period would be during the actual meeting and not before the meeting, as it had been historically on an informal basis.
Right, and I also see, I remember when we used to have them, we would typically have comments that were not agenda items, but we've removed that, I think, you know, that's constitutionally invalid as we have seen. So it would really allow people to address any topic as long as, you know, it's not constitutionally protected or threatening or, you know, outside of our scope of the board. So that would be somewhat different than our past policy. But I think the policy itself makes sense and it's good to codify. Discussion. Mary Ann?
Well, and I would just note that people always and, and continue to be encouraged to select or to provide comments and feedback via our email, so selectboard@needham.com.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Next item. Petition on Warren.
Mr. Chair, if it makes sense to you, I have some items to discuss, maybe we could do it as each, each article comes up.
That is fine. I would just like, before we begin, are there any articles? I would just ask the board for you, Kate, that are not ripe yet. I know, I would like to see, for example, the two citizens petitions, someone come in to discuss their positions on those, but.
They're scheduled for the 12th.
They're scheduled. As far as the planning board articles, I, I feel they're straightforward. I'd ask the board if, is that, yes?
Well, the, the second, the newest zoning article has not had a public hearing yet, so that probably wouldn't be, but the, the first one would be.
The first one would be. Okay, so just with that, yes, why don't we walk through?
And then I had a question. For the Emory Grover, there were two recent, I guess we got an email with some updates. I know that came kind of late, so I didn't have time to look at it. But as far as that's concerned, should we push for that one so we can have a little more time? I think that just came today, or do you, I would have.
Yes, Kate.
I believe the information that I sent you today was based on the presentation you had at your last meeting. So it was reflective of, there's been no new change. It's the new, certainly you don't need to vote it tonight, but it is the, the backup for the new cost estimate for Emory Grover that's now just under 21 million.
Okay, great. We can discuss that one, get to that article, though. Okay, great, so.
But it's not, I just want to make sure it wasn't, it was not.
The email.
Thank you for that.
Articles one and two, amending the sewer and water enterprise fund budgets to account for salary and wages approved for collective bargaining agreements and last May. And also based on the actual assessments received from the MWR. Both of these have been recommended by the Finance Committee and are both ready for your decision if you want to make it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt Articles one and two.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Just formally, it's a motion to recommend town meeting approved.
Approved.
Exactly, correct.
Okay, any more discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Article three, to appropriate the transportation improvement fees. This is the fees that come from the Commonwealth based on ride shares and Uber and Lyft. You can see that ride share use during FY, calendar 20 was significantly lower than in prior years. And so the amount that we've received for the year is $7,603.90. This, as, as our reporting to the Commonwealth, we've allocated for pedestrian and bicycle safety initiatives, primarily in this case, supporting the Bike Land Initiative that Karis Lustig had brought to you at a recent meeting and that we continue to work away at.
Is there a motion? On this?
I move that the select board recommend adoption.
There's a second?
I second.
Discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Article four is the zoning for the outdoor seating. I don't know if you would want them to come in?
Well, I know there was a discussion tonight again on the seasonal, and I, I know that they have some jurisdiction on, it looks like, within the business owner's property. The private, okay. So I don't know if that's something that the board would like. Do we have, we have room on our schedule, well, let's, let's bring them in, I have them, have a discussion on that. I think that would make me more comfortable, especially in light of some of the questions we received.
Chairman, have, ask the.
Ask the planning board, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And are they gonna, in, in the same vein, if that's, are you gonna include talking about Article 12? An Article 12 addresses zoning and housing issues. And that's really, the subject matter is in there.
Yep.
Jurisdiction.
Yep, that is fine. I'd like to hear from them on that. We also, we have the citizens petitioners though coming in on.
They are, yes. Plenty of board may be meeting that night.
Okay. Yes, Mary Ann?
As, as I'm trying to read through this, thinking about the concerns that came in tonight. Kate, I know that we have the ability, for example, to re-extend the outdoor seating. What I'm not completely clear on is, is that extension only for the public spaces? Or is it also for private spaces? Is there a line in here? Does there need to be a line in here that, that recognizes that the select board policy will govern whatever that is?
Katie, and to me, it looks like there is, that's what I noticed too, that it looks like they govern private and we govern public. But I'd like to hear more, Katie.
So my understanding of the zoning article is when board has full permission to approve private spaces any time of year, it's just a matter of what process they go through. So if the applicant is asking for April 1 to October 31, it's an expedited review, not a full special permit process. If the applicant wants outdoor dining on private property outside of those, that standard calendar, they had to go through a special permit process before the planning board. So it is allowed, it's just a procedural distinction.
So just to get out loud, it seems to me that that can work. I, I would wonder, and I'm not sure it's worth the change at this point, if it would be worthwhile to recognize that if there were a change from the select board that related to dining on public property, that that automatically would be afforded to approved private situations? And just getting those out of sync in a negative way feels to me like it would be off-putting to the town citizens.
Again, I think.
I don't know if it's, but interesting. Okay, thank you.
And I think it's onerous, you know, I don't know, and I'd like to talk to them about the special permit process for this type of use. And you wouldn't want it to be too onerous, because they, they tend to be. Unlike with us, it might be a little bit quicker. So I just, I think that's correct, I want to get on the same page, how that would work for a request, but, thank you.
Presumably, you'd want to talk.
Now I actually want to talk a little more about this. What, I mean, I get the idea, we would like to have the same procedure for things of selection permits and things, and things that the planners permit, that are basically the same activity, but are under separate jurisdictions because of reasons of statute and law. Is this doc, is this, what they've got in here as the draft, is that consistent with what we're doing at this, or intending to do at this point?
I think both procedures have some flexibility built into them. It's just a matter of the, the business entity has a lot of things that are in their special permit that the planning board presumably would want to review for changes that are outside that time period. And this is the effort to expedite, is that fair?
Yes, and the planning board had the ability to approve outdoor dining in that, in that, in expedited fashion for that April 1 to end of October period. They always had the ability to approve outside of that calendar. So the zoning change is to give this board permission to approve outdoor dining on public parking spaces.
All right. Right, and I guess the discussion that I would like to have is, there is, could there be a continued flexibility on the planning board's part to be able to extend that through November without a special permit process? Similar to when if someone came to this board, it would be, in other words, using that expedited language to give a little more flexibility as we would do.
Yeah.
So, but we can have that discussion.
Yeah.
For the planners.
For them to have that authority, is there any change that would need to be made to Article four?
That is my question.
We can review with plenty of stuff and.
Okay. I think we can talk to them about whether or not they're going to allow flexibility, that's. But, but if something needs to be in the bylaw, we need to, for them to have that authority, we just need to be clear. Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, it would be an amendment at that point, because.
Yes, I know, I know. Okay.
So under Article five, the planning board hearing is October 5.
Okay.
And presumably, if they're the chair or the chair and the vice chair and director of planning are able to come in, they could talk about that article as well.
Great.
So Mr. Chair, under Article six, appropriate for the Ridge Hill Building Demolition, we've had further conversation and Mike Wetzke, the project manager, and Stuart Chandler, the chair of the P P B C, met with the Finance Committee, it was last week. And at the request of the Finance Committee, went and looked again at the, some of the contingency percentages that they have associated with this project. And then P P B C has discussed lowering their request by about $50,000 to 600. The total estimated project cost is $603,091. And so it would be my recommendation to include the final number that the P P B C voted last night in the warrant. Continue to talk to the Finance Committee about what their thoughts are, and they'll take it up at a meeting in October.
So I just think, you know, there does come a time, and I've walked that property with members of the town, Finance Committee, P P B C, and there does come a time when you have to trust their guidance and expertise, you know. I know in the business, it's a high number, but I think that public construction and demolition costs are different than, we all know, private sector costs. And if they're comfortable with that number, I think we need to take this building down and move forward on this project.
Mr. Chair, the funding source for this article is a number of Warren articles that can be reallocated. And so we will be adjusting those as well in terms of the financing to meet the 603,091 rather than the 650.
Great.
Consider that a technical correction.
Do you, are we ready then to vote with that amount?
I would be ready to make a motion that we recommend adoption with the, I don't have the number in front of me, but 603,000, whatever it is.
091.
091. Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Article seven.
Before we pass off, I just, we just, I think you actually addressed this, Mr. Chairman, but it's just when questions from the community frequently circulate around the number, why is this so high? And it's just, we believe, for the reasons you've said, that, 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 that under the circumstances and given the contingencies and so on that are built into it, we're not going to spend any more than we have to. But they need to have the people whose job it is to make sure that this gets done within the budget and in a timely and safe way, recommended this number. I just think we need to be prepared to be as robust as town members, meeting members need us to be in explaining this.
Agreed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I add, I think that's a great question, that in terms of the actual hard costs, not the design or escalation or contingencies, there's, the site clearing and earthwork component of this project is pretty significant at almost, at 81,000. Hazardous waste remediation is 89,000, and the demolition itself, 114,000, with site improvements, landscaping, finishing the road, 33,000, and then mechanical, electrical plumbing at 26,000. So 345,000 approximately is the actual cost of moving the earth, taking the building down, remediating the hazardous materials. The concern is, we have actually found a gasoline pump in the garage. We don't believe that there's any hazardous material that's leaked out of a tank, but we can't be sure. So we've had this problem very recent past where there was material we didn't know.
Right.
You've got that.
So it is, it is a number that people think is higher than they might pay to take down a house, but there's just a lot of, there's a lot of things that go into that number. So I'm sure in your presentation that you make, Mr. Chair, it'll be all mapped out.
Thank you, and it's different, you know, in the private sector, if they're unknowns and you have to go back either to the bank or, you know, it's, you can be a lot more agile. But if your contingency isn't managed themselves at the fire station, you have to go back to town meetings. That's another six months potentially to get in, a potential of not getting approval. So you want to make sure that, of course, you don't want to spend money, you would get turned back anyway, we don't appropriate too much. But we do want to have a healthy contingency for those factors.
And then, Mr. Chairman, one more question, just Article five, are we waiting on that till after we meet with the planners also?
Correct, they still haven't had a public hearing on that.
Okay.
Emory Grover?
Again, Mr. Chair, we circulated information today that went to the P P B C last night outlining the cost estimates for the new project. The, there was no recommendation to change the engineering and design for the renovation in addition, because that cost is pretty much stable regardless of the project.
Great. Is there a motion to approve this article?
I move that the, the board recommend approval of Article seven to town meeting.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion. Marcus?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. So I'm just looking at, I know, though, we had, you know, numerous amounts of people in to discuss this and kind of talk about where we're heading, why we're heading there. And what's needed to get there is the 1.47 million dollars, or 1.475. And then I think my only hangup is, what I'm just questioning a little bit is the CPA funding that's going to be coming that we're eligible for, I know first has to be, you know, approved by the CPC. And I know that, you know, what they're trying to do, because, you know, down the line, there's going to be more applications for funding and whatnot, that's going to be coming, no matter if it's affordable housing or other areas that may need money. So I know that we're not positive how much we're getting yet. And I know we probably won't know until CPC kind of comes before us in November. I believe they're coming around and kind of talk to us a little bit more about that. So I think what I'm thinking is, for myself personally, kind of waiting to see and understand how that number, as far as what we're going to get or not get, is going to affect kind of what we're paying and constituents are going to retain, paying for taxes, you know, if this were to go through for that number. And I know it's one of those really high numbers that we can consistently talk about. And there's many reasons why that is the number, the 20 to 21 million. And then the 3 million that it would take to renovate or to look at hillside for a temporary occupancy. While I understand for sure that something needs to be done about Emory Grover and we need to get people out of that building. I just, I don't think I'm ready to vote yes just yet for this when it comes down to it, until I get a little bit more information as what we're going to do in the future with all the other applications that'll be coming through and that we're going to have to kind of sit through.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dan.
Chairman, maybe I could try to speak to that a little bit. And it has to do with kind of the order of doing things and what the net costs are and what the contributions from different sources are. This article asks for the 1.475 million. This, all. This all that all comes from tax levy, regular tax levy funding if it's approved, although it will be bonded. So it will ultimately be spread over the long term cost of of the project. Or no project, if the project is not ultimately approved. But this is a this vote, which happens on the twenty fifth of October, is up or down. And basically either means we're going to have plans developed that we can use to build this proposal. Or basically, that means we're people may say there are other alternatives, but from my perspective, after all the work, that's really the end of the line for the Emory Grover, which up to this point has been treated as a valuable historic structure in the town and also is the place that we look to to have the space that we need for our for our administration. The question of CPC funding is important, but it actually is kind of a subset of things that happen later in the process. If town meeting approves this, we know that we'll be headed for a project that ultimately will come back for an additional, if you take the if the total cost of the project is going to be twenty million dollars, and I think that's a good working number, minus the one point four. So they're going to be coming back in May for approximately eighteen and a half million dollars of bonded funding. And that will require a two thirds vote of town meeting to pass. Now, there's a question as to where the month where that eighteen million dollars is is coming from. And because almost all of the project now is within the footprint of the existing Emory Grover building, it's basically almost entirely eligible to be funded by CPC historic preservation monies that the town receives. However, there's both, that's not going to happen.
Right.
And because the CPC committee has, there are four different areas of commitment that they have, the historic, open space, affordable housing and conservation. And as they look down the road and see how their one will approach the 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 process of of using the funds that they are receiving. The they've got their membership, which is composed of representatives from nine different sort of nine members from seven different appointing authorities. They have not made a final decision on how they're on how much they will allocate to this. Now, the last time that and I'm going to go, I'm going into a little detail and if it's too much, I I'll stop. But I I think this may be helpful to some of the public to understand that the last time that this project came forward, the CPC committee had said, we will recommend six million dollars of funding from CPC. Now, decided to take that article off the off the the table and it didn't go to town meeting for a vote. And I think it's clear that CPC has reserved the right to review that figure again and up or down. And could their recommendation can be anything between frankly, zero.
Zero.
And the legal maximum, which I would guess off the top of my head, is probably in the vicinity of fifteen million dollars because it's basically all a historic preservation project. When you consider that historic preservation also is allowed to include all code and safety changes that you had to make for programs. A second thing that people need to understand about the CPC funding is that it is all through a process in which the two things happen to have have to happen for one dollar to come out of that of those funds. You need a recommendation from the CPC committee by majority vote, and you need a vote of town meeting to use that money. And I I could be mistaken, but I suspect that where there's going to be bonding involved for all of the money that comes into this, that would be a two thirds vote of town meeting. So on the other hand, or back at the beginning, ultimately, it's all taxed, basically all the public's money. The public pays their property taxes and that goes in, that's the main source of all town revenue. Hundred and sixty million dollars a year or something like that now. And then it's a two, and I'm saying that off the top of my head, the town manager knows better than me. The CPC funds come from a two percent surcharge on that that all the virtually all of the taxpayers pay. There's a few exemptions to that, but virtually all of them pay two percent. That money is then receives a partial match from the state, which varies from year to year. And that basically goes into a trust that's controlled by the CPC committee for this recommendation process that I'm talking about. So where is that bringing me around to?
One minute, one minute.
This is, it brings me to the point that the ultimate cost of the project is going to be twenty million dollars as far as we know. It's going to be voted up or down by town meeting and their pre and since they're basically paying for all of it, if they approve it, they're going to vote yes or no based on the value that that they perceive in the project and they're going to get. And they're going to make that decision. By the top, by May, we will have in the warrant, recommendation from the CPC of how much of that twenty million they are committing if town meeting approves the whole project. And I think that placeholder figure that a lot of the people acting on this are using is six million dollars. But there's no guarantee up or down, and you're not going to know what that number is, in my opinion, actually until fairly a ways into the CPC project. Now, they can meet anytime they want and they can vote, they could vote to answer the question, how much are they going to commit? But they haven't done that yet.
Right.
And they usually operate on a process of asking for all of the applications.
That's what I was getting.
Putting them all on the table, having public hearings on all of them and then making a recommendation. So you may not know until March or later what their opinion is of this. I'm going into this long explanation basically to make the argument that it's information that's late arriving, but it doesn't affect the total cost of the project. It doesn't affect the total burden of the taxpayers. It just has to do with some some issues about prioritization that different committees have about how they approach their work. Its bottom line effect on the taxpayers and that isn't that much if from the taxpayer's point of view is and town meeting members, is this twenty million dollar project worth it for the town? Is this a good thing to do? We have to make the town meeting has to make the preliminary decision on October twenty fifth. And therefore, we have to give them a recommendation before that. If you wanted to take another week to review this stuff and think about it.
I'm good, yeah.
But I think it's it's just ready, it's just about as ready to go as you can get an I task with a yes vote.
Okay.
And I apologize.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
It's one of those accounting things.
Understand. Mary Ann?
I was going to give my short statement here to say that I view this as a necessary and absolutely critical first step to understanding what it's going to take to move our current school administration out of Emory Grover into an alternate site of Hillside. That's the information that we need also looking forward to May. If we do not do that, then the superintendent has told us that he will be asking for budget dollars from the town budget to lease space for them. We don't know where they're going to lease it and how great that cost is going to be because we know there doesn't seem to be space available meeting their requirements. So so being able to find a place for them and have a plan for that, this is critical to that and I absolutely support it for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I would just say, in summary, too, this is our kind of stake in the ground, saying this is the direction we want to move in. And just like in past projects, we start with the design money. And then as we move forward, then we get the hopefully as it goes through, as we're talking about CPC, we get funding from them. But this is a statement that we are moving on this track, otherwise as Mary Ann said, there's a Plan V. It sounds like, you know, it would be leasing space, which does not sound like an alternative. But I guess, Marcus, I would ask, is it, would you be ready, I think to Dan's question, to to table this and think about it for another, you know, our next meeting, or do you feel that?
We can vote now. Yeah.
Your position is?
Yeah.
Fuck. Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? During now, we come to the vote. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, let's three to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Article eight.
Mr. Chair, this is the article where we're proposing a change to the methodology by which we would propose to install the solar ray, the Jack Cogswell building. So essentially, what we had proposed before was to rescind a portion of the authorization to construct the building and then reappropriate an amount for the through debt for the town to construct the array. We're now proposing that the rescission vote on the building itself be moved to the normal course, which would be next May, and that a substitute article be included that would authorize the board to lease all our portion of the roof of the Jack Cogswell building to a private entity to run that array. The when you take a look at the potential benefit of the array, the best case scenario over twenty five years was approximately, by which I mean financially, we believe there's an environmental benefit no matter what. The best case scenario was about four hundred and five thousand over twenty five years. The conservative estimate was two hundred and forty eight thousand and the power purchase agreement is three hundred and thirty one thousand. So it's higher than the conservative estimate. It's not as good as the best estimate, but it does take the town out of the business of of constructing it and it allows for the use of that borrowing authorization for other projects that we can do. So we're still working out some of the details and some of them may be still being worked out leading up to town meeting, but would propose that the board change the methodology in this article. And I would note, for those who knew Jack Cogswell, I think he'd be very excited about this project on the move of the building that has his name.
That's terrific and agreed. I know when P P B C came to us, the delta seemed larger between these two options. But I think, as you said, the debt capacity issue and also not having, you know, kind of not owning all the the maintenance and care of it, I think that makes up for that delta. So I think it's a smart way to proceed with this article. Is there a motion?
So are we ready to vote? What's in the warrant to?
No, no.
The one that was emailed.
Yes, that's, yeah, you have it. That's going to be substituted.
Okay, all right. I move that we vote to recommend town meeting approval of the article of Article eight using the text provided by the town manager for this meeting. The revised.
Revised one. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? During none, we come to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Great.
Under Article nine, proposing that the town return the six hundred and seventy four thousand nine hundred dollars that was available after the completion of the synthetic turf replacement project that occurred at Memorial and Fazio to the athletic facility stabilization fund so that it can be saved up for other projects and or the next replacement of the synthetic turf.
Great. Any motion on this article?
I I moved that the board recommend adoption of Article nine.
I second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Article ten.
Article ten, another goal of the board is to align the number of off premises licenses for the sale of alcohol away from the limit that was imposed under our special act under the, which was that chapter two thousand, chapter two hundred and seven of the Act of two thousand twelve, limiting us to eight of these off premise licenses, of which only six can be for all alcohol and to align it with the state quota system, which is in place for most municipalities for off premises sale of alcohol, which would allow slightly greater flexibility for the town. And if the town's population is is indeed above thirty thousand, we would have additional licenses as well. So if under that scenario, the quote that new, if we were aligned with the quota system, the town would have seven all alcohol and seven wine and malt. So significantly more than they have now. I would note that, again, a home repetition goes through the legislature, is approved by the governor and in the text of this home repetition, giving the town's history with bringing alcohol related items to the voters, propose that it would be put on the ballot for approval by the town.
Great. And I know we've discussed that for a while and we issued our last license, I think it was late spring or summer. So I think this would benefit a business interested in obtaining another license. Is there a motion?
A motion, a motion to adopt Article ten.
And I'll second that recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to recommend adoption of Article ten is seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And Mr. Chair, Article eleven and Article twelve proponents are invited and scheduled for October twelfth.
And do we know if the planning board has heard from on Article twelve?
Yes, I believe it's on the agenda for October fifth.
Okay.
I believe.
Fine. So when they come to us, we'll have some idea of their position. Okay. Great. Thank you.
One last item.
Yes.
Just a few updates. Town park recreation and other related departments had a successful townwide cleanup this past weekend. So it's just so great to see all the volunteers out there picking up the trash and getting that getting ourselves spruced up for the winter months. Our healthy Needham Healthy Eating Week is is next week when restaurants are going to highlight healthy options on their menus from October third to ninth. Something that our public health department is very organizing. And then again, between now and your next meeting, the Harvest Fair will be held on Sunday, the third of October from twelve to four. So those are just some of the items that are that are in the news here in town.
All good stuff. Mary Ann?
Can I just ask a question about a different item? Do you have any insight yet on when you think we might see a revised precinct map?
Yes, the town clerk received it either the very beginning of this week, very beginning of this week, and she has sent it to information technology and engineering to make sure that they are in agreement with with the exact lines are, and she intends to attend your meeting on October twelfth to discuss the precincts. We're getting, we're getting busy, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, great. That'd be nice to see. Great. Thank you, Kate. For discussion, we have three items. So we're going to start with train horn noise and quiet zone planning. As we all know, we voted to adopt a goal for the quiet zone to look into ways that we can possibly get Needham to have a quiet zone in Needham. It is going to be a long process. That is clear. Has to go through many steps, including appropriations of money. There was a hope at one time that the ARBA funds could be used, but that is not the case. But still, due to the train coming now on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, which I think will still warrant more discussions with the MBTA. And, you know, some of the discussions we're hearing about early morning trains, I just wanted to put this on the agenda to let people know that we are still looking, you know, we're looking into this issue. We have not forgotten about this issue. Things just move, you know, slow. And the next plan or course of action is for us, a chair, vice chair, meeting with the MBTA to discuss how we can move this forward. We are also looking at the Great Plainhead Crossing pretty much first on our list to see what we can do at that crossing to make it ready for a quiet zone. And then, of course, we'll have discussions as we move forward about updating the figures and if we need a consultant to help with any licensing and a discussion with the MBTA on that, as well as our legislative delegation. But there is not too much to report. I just wanted to let the public know that we are scheduled, I think, the next couple of months to have a meeting with the MBTA to kind of go over where we stand on this and that we stand to try to get a quiet zone in the town of Needham. So with that, I just open it up for any discussion among the members. Mary Ann?
Again, I was just going to check in with the town manager. I believe that there is a constituent in town who's been concerned about noise vibration from the trains. So we're also. So we're also planning to have a discussion with the MBTA about vibration and whether there might be some options that can minimize train vibrations as well that might be helpful, particularly in the heights where the train sits and idles at odd hours early in late.
I did speak to Representative Garlick about that, and that would be part of our discussion. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for that, Mary Ann.
We expect to use a consultant in developing recommendations. At what point do you think we'll do that after these initial meetings or?
So we may need a consultant to shepherd the license process, but with respect to the grade crossings, I think it's clear that we will, you know, put into the capital plan to start designing the improvements that need to be made to the grade crossings that would allow for the quiet zone. So that will get in our capital plan, and then the design will get in, and then the funding for the construction will get in the capital plan, and that's how we move forward. So that, we do have, because we're using, we are doing the project for the next phase of the downtown design includes the area at the Great Plain Ave Crossing. We have included that in the project, using Chapter 90 funds we were able to use for that. So that's the first grade crossing, but we're, we're pretty much, we had a feasibility study. We've heard back from the MBTA, those are posted on the Quiet Zone page of our website. That's been done. We're really moving towards implementation. But again, we may need outside help, either consultant or railroad ops specialist or special counsel with respect to licensing with the, through the federal government's Quiet Zone program.
Yeah, I, I think I'm just trying to understand this part of the, of this, of this process, which is that at some point, we're going to be planning to design infrastructure, architecture for these intersections and will presumptively put us in a situation where the federal government will approve the quiet zone. And then sort of the chicken and egg problem of that is, we don't want to design something unless it's going to get approved. And so do we need any guidance to that, or can we just go and talk and with these meetings with the, with the MBTA and the federal authorities, give us the information that we need to proceed to, to design?
I, I think it's well settled what needs to be done. I think the, you know, our consultant gave us a report. We know the measures that need to be taken. We'll come back to the board about them, but they're likely to be the quad, the quad gate and do the measurements to make sure that they would achieve the goal. Those median barriers are very difficult in our climate and they, they're difficult for traffic and they're difficult for plowing. So we know the strategies we need. We need to start getting into the capital plan, funding for the design of them and then funding for the construction of them, and at the same time pursue the licensing with those, with that information in mind. But I, we may need some consulting help on that, but we don't need another feasibility.
Okay, oh, all right. And I, and I hate just plowing over it. The, we've had the prior reports and recommendations for you, and I know that technologies and standards and codes and things are sometimes subject to, but what you're saying is our best understanding and belief is that those recommendations, if the town is willing to fund them, will get, will qualify for the quiet zone.
That's our understanding now. Again, we have to meet with the MBTA and, and, you know, begin the license process, and then hire our consulting engineers, and at that time, if the best practice has changed, that's what we'll be designing.
Okay, and then are we looking then to a May vote on design?
We have a five-year capital plan. We have a five-year capital plan.
Yep.
None of this is in that capital plan. The plan is a formal document of what we've decided to fund, so we're trying to find a way to insert design in that five-year plan.
Okay, that's the question.
That will not be a May vote, Mr. Chair.
No, no, this is, so the first step is to determine the cost and find and see how we can fit that into and where that can be fit into the capital plan.
And, and working to the extent we can at the same time to do the, the paperwork and all of the licensing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matt. It was cool.
So Kate, when will we sort of have a view of what the overall cost is for the quiet zone in town? Is that something that we would have a ballpark of?
I can get, well, we have a ballpark from our consultant and we have a ballpark from the MBTA, which is significantly higher. I can get you that. Yeah, okay. The real, the real number will be once it's designed.
Right.
Yeah.
You're good, okay. Thank you. So stay tuned. It is something that we're, we're moving on and we'll have an update after we meet with the MBTA to bring back. So, okay, next item on the agenda, code of conduct. This is inserted because we, it was one of our goals is to establish kind of a formalized code of conduct document. And I, I did look, I don't know, about a month ago or a couple months ago, you know, at other towns, and they do have documents that you can look through and kind of better understand what we can do, what we can't do. We came up with a list that's contained in your agenda fact sheet of items that were mentioned or that we thought would be, thought that would be good, Mary Ann and I and Kate, to add to that manual. And I remember, just as an aside, I remember when I first got on the board, I was in the finance committee, and I met with Kate before the meeting. I came and I think I had jeans on. She said to me, you're not wearing that. You know you're not wearing that for tonight's meeting. I know that, you know, I'm used to going to, but it's, it's nowhere else, you know, and I just think that's funny. It's so informal. And I remember Dan, you know, being such a mentor, kind of saying, hey, you can't really speak for the board. You can do this. You can't do that. And none of it's really been codified. And unless you have a mentor or you're familiar with town government, you're really kind of, you know, on your own. And I think it's, you know, we have another election coming after we're going to be discussing. It's just important to have things laid out as they relate to our role on the board, because a lot of people don't know our role, and especially people moving into this position, it's important to kind of understand what you can and can't do, and it would be a good way to navigate through in a great public document for people to see as we move ahead. So we have this list here. If there are any other items that you would like to add or discuss, that's something that we can absolutely add and discuss either tonight or at a future date. Marcus.
Absolutely. So I'm looking at, going down the list, and I feel like it's a pretty good subset of items. As far as the compliance with town policy and state law, would the conflict of interests be rolled up in that, or should that be a separate category on its own? As far as, I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are about that.
Well, I think that would encompass, you know, some type of that conflict of interest, and that could be either a subset of that, but that would definitely be included in that category. And one of the examples is, as a member, and I had to do it myself, going to town council and getting an opinion before you proceed with something that may or may not appear as a conflict. And there are other areas where if you're a member of a club or a group, you can go and then have a letter that's filed with the town clerk to say that you can still be, you know, objective when it comes to hearing that matter. So I think those items would definitely be contained, maybe the pathway of if there's going to be any potential conflict, how to deal with those, and maybe a discussion thereon, especially municipal employee versus just a non-special designation. But we could make that either together or a subset, but it would definitely be included.
All right, and then following up on that, I was, as you were looking at other boards, select boards throughout Mass and whatnot. And one of the things that I saw with conflict of interest is that if something was presented to the board or find deemed that could be an actual conflict of interest or an area that of could be some concern, then the vote would have the, the board would have the opportunity to kind of vote on that within us to see if that's deemed necessary, then have that other board member bring to us facts or whatever it may be, and then we kind of vote to see. And if we vote that it is, then that board member wouldn't be, you know, obligated or able to speak on behalf of that certain situation until we establish what we do from there. So to kind of have us kind of, you know, policing ourselves in, in that sense by the other board members coming to a vote and determining if we feel that is necessary to kind of give us more of a, more of a hand in that role if, if we need help with that. That's just something I just wanted to add, but that's something we can discuss.
I think to me, and we can discuss that, to me, town council is the ultimate arbiter of, you know, that, those issues, but I'd be curious to see the language in the other
Okay.
towns, and if you send that along and
Oh, yeah.
I'd be very, very curious how other towns handle it.
You got it.
And if it's something we can discuss handling in that way, then we can discuss as a board.
Okay.
Uh, Mary Ann?
So there is a category here called use of technology. I believe that that area encompasses things like social media. I, I know that it's often confusing and people are often asking select board members to comment publicly on Facebook and on other forums about various matters online. And we tend to be very careful about that. And the reason we're very careful about that is because if there were to be, in our case, three of us commenting on some particular item, we would create an open meeting law violation. So I just want to say items like that will also be detailed more in this particular code of conduct so that we can make sure that people understand the opportunities, the many opportunities we have for creating possible violations of state laws.
Now, that, that makes sense. And also, I think in this, you know, again, I was, 10 years ago, been roughly on the board. That's really, Facebook was kind of blowing up, and I remember even at the time, and obviously it's got much bigger since then. But the idea is that if someone spoke, you were wondering if they were speaking again on behalf of the board or themselves. And it's that blurry line that we have to all be careful of, I think, as we use social media of our position. Is it just your position? Is it the position of the board? And just providing clarity to the public on that and using that medium. Yes, Marcus.
And then as far as speaking on behalf of the board or oneself, I know this past town meeting, we had a situation where, where we were speaking as a proponent, but in turn, one of us said that they were speaking for themselves, but I feel like it's still deemed as a proponent that you're speaking for, even if you identify that. So maybe we try to do our best to kind of just stick to, if it's the proponent, this is what the majority voted for, just stick and stay on topic, so there's no confusion with that. I think that's something maybe we look at too, if we're doing something in front of town meeting or, for instance, and that's the first thing that I just thought about. So maybe we consider just staying on task with that.
And it's also been a kind of, again, something that's just been passed down as that the minority view, if you take a no vote typically, or always, you don't present on that article as well, so that would probably also be in there. But, thank you.
Yep.
I think it'll be good to have, to work on this, and it might help in some respects. Once we have a draft text to work on, then we can say, well, we need some more wording here or there. You know, we've discussed particularly some of the, how, there is a challenge for board members that are charged with representing the view of the board when they're, as we each are assigned to work on different issues, and if that, things are not working the right way there, we need to sort that out. And similarly, in terms of talking about the ethics issues, you can't, we have enough people arguing about ethics issues around here that you can't entirely separate the current arguments that are people having from what the general policy ought to be. But I think, your first question, Marcus, about, well, how does, how does, how does ethics fit in here? It is in the question of town policy and state law. And so once we have, when we get a draft, I mean, there's basically three, to me, the state ethics laws are both very strict, but they also are very detailed and have some gray areas in them, and they have the effect of both prohibiting some things that most people, many people think should be allowed and allowing some things that some people think should be prohibited. And to me, I tend to be, it is a difficult enough area, and you do not please everyone, that I'm happy to let town council and the state ethics commission resolve those. But I need to have an open mind listening to others and how they, how they view these things. Certainly, the big question that comes in there is, in this policy, are we going to require adherence to the state statutes? Or are we going to set some higher standards or some lower standard? Well, we can't set a lower standard. The state law is binding.
Correct.
So it really is a question of, do we feel the, the need? Or do we feel that the town would be better served by having some rules in addition to what the state statutes provide? And I think that when we have a draft text in front of us, it will be easier to talk about that.
Dissect, add, and subtract. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next item on the agenda, board discussion. And again, as we said at the top of the meeting, Lakshmi Balachandra resigned from the board, and, you know, there is provision in place. It's 100 days before the election. It's longer than that. And there could be a way for the town or the citizens of the town to ask for special election. I think, my opinion, I think opinion of others, that the wise move would be to, on our own, call for a special election. And the question to me, and we can discuss this again and again, that's my opinion, would be what would be a feasible date that we could in order to not have it kind of creep up to the next election? And therefore, it's a lot of work and money to get a special election going. So how soon could we do it to be feasible and then have it be effective? Mary Ann?
Um, I'm going to let you go back to that in a moment. I think you skipped a step that I hear a lot of questions about, and I, I don't think I heard it. A lot of citizens in town are asking if the select board has the ability to make an appointment
Okay.
for this role, and I think it's important to people, for people to know that the select board does not have the ability to appoint a new member of the select board. Somehow, I think it makes perfect sense that we, you know, don't have the ability to appoint to our own board, and therefore the state requires, in fact, that the seat on the board be filled by either a regular or a special election. So I think it's important for people in town to know that. That is a question that we've heard a lot. You will see the select board working with other boards to make appointments to other boards when there is a vacancy on certain other boards. So, so it's not that you haven't seen that before. It just has, does not happen for the select board.
Right, that is correct. Thank you for that clarification. So the idea here is to call a special election, if we can do it within a reasonable time in order to have a new member on this board and help clear up the workload and the guide to the board going forward. So Kate, do we have any, I know we were, you were working with the town clerk to try to get a date for what the feasible?
Yes, and she sent it out to you today.
She did, correct.
December 7th is her earliest.
Right, and we looked, we had that chart today, how, when papers would have to be filed. And I think it was, would it be Friday, I think, where you'll be able to pull papers? If you're interested in the position, and that timeline worked for the town clerk, and it worked from where I'm sitting, and we're going to have a discussion and a possible vote if that works for the board. So open up to the discussion, Mary Ann.
Again, I don't have that in front of me. I'm hoping that somebody does, because I think it would be helpful for us to go through each of the steps in the, in the process. It's not in our materials, so, so I, I just think, Marcus, if you've got it up, go ahead and just read through the various states so that people understand kind of what the critical steps are.
Absolutely. All right, as Matt mentioned, the nomination papers would be available for the select board vacancy starting this Friday, October 1st. And the last day to file nomination papers with the board of registers, which would be 49 days before the town election, would be Tuesday, October 19th. The last day for the board of registers to file nomination papers with the town clerk, which would be 35 days prior to the special town election, would be Tuesday, November 2nd. The last day to object or withdraw before the special town, sorry, special town election would be 48 hours after filing the deadline, which would be Thursday, November 4th. The last day to register to vote before a special town election, and this is a special, special voter registration session, would be Wednesday, November 17th, between 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM. The last day to post a warrant for special town election would be Tuesday, November 30th. Last day to apply for early vote and absentee ballots by mail would be Wednesday, December 1st. The last day to apply for absentee ballots in person would be Monday, December 6th, by noon, by 12:00 noon, PM. And then the date of the actual special election. And then the date of the actual special election, which would run from seven AM to eight PM on this day, would be Tuesday, December seventh.
Thank you for that, Marcus.
Yeah.
Discussion. Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll offer the motion to set the special election for December seventh, twenty twenty-one, to elect to fill the vacancy on this board.
And that, was there a second?
A second.
And that term would be until, that term would be up, so that would be a, about a two, two and a half year filling for that.
Okay, so it'd be the same year then?
Exactly, exactly. Yep.
April twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, that sounds better than how I put it. Okay, any further discussion?
Just, just, just a little bit, because, um, you, you'd mentioned the cost, and we're always trying to save money around here, but I think a lot of people expect us to fill the board if we can. Even if there are some people in town that would prefer, even if the majority didn't want to have, have the special election, if we do not act, two hundred, any two hundred of our twenty thousand voters have a right to insist that we have it. And it, and, and we know from just what the town clerk has said to us that it's tough enough to at least have this degree of control over planning rather than just open the mail every day and see if there's a, if there's petition. So the cost is simply a cost of, of having a good democracy in this, in this town, the timeline is reasonable. I think it makes sense to do the election as, as, if we could get it done before Thanksgiving, probably a lot of people would do that, but that, like that, but that's not the timeline that, that we have in terms of the very, of the time that people need to be allowed for the different parts of the process. So getting it done or having the election early in December is, is far enough ahead of the end of the year holidays that people should be able to work with that. I know that the town clerk's office is, it's shorthanded right now anyway, and that in addition, that this is a census year and a re-presincting year, these things add to their workload too. So I hope that this board and all, and the town manager's office can be, can give us, can do whatever is necessary to help support the clerk's office in, in implementing the election, and that if there's anything that we need to do to facilitate that, that I hope that the town clerk and the town manager won't hesitate to ask. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that, Dan, and completely agree, and I want to thank in advance the town clerk and her office for this unexpected election, and it's a lot of pressure, but as you said, it's necessary, and we'll get through it and get it done. Whatever resources are requested, we will try to provide. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote, alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you. Last item is committee reports. Any committee reports? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn the meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, this meeting is adjourned.